All, we are in session. And call to order and ask Pastor Ann Ramsey from Speak the Word Ministries to come forward and give the invocation.
Good evening, everyone. Before I pray, I'd like to read this verse from First Timothy, chapter two. In First Timothy, Paul writes, he says, "First of all, then I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and for all in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way." Let's pray, please. Father, I lift up each council member to you tonight and ask you to guide them in their decisions and actions, that they might fulfill your purposes and give honor and glory to you. I ask you to give them extra wisdom, for you said, Lord, if any man likes wisdom, let him ask of God, and he will give it to them. God gives freely to everyone and does not find fault. So I thank you, Lord, for giving our council members the wisdom and the grace they need tonight to make godly decisions. First, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
All present, sir.
Okay, can I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion second. Vote is open.
Mr. Tower, Mr. Ralph, Mr. Tower, may I have your vote? Thank you. By a vote of eleven to zero, you have certified the closed session and been in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay, and we have a motion to approve the informal and formal sessions of January 21st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, vote is open.
If I wasn't here.
Was I here?
You were not here, Ms. O'Neal.
Well, I wasn't here for the workshop. Take it back. I was here for the meeting.
Actually, I need to take that. I wasn't here for that.
Go ahead, you can change it. It's still open.
I need to actually abstain.
You can change it then. Thank you. By a vote of nine to zero, you've approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay, at this point, the council is proud to make a presentation for, on behalf of African-American Heritage Month. Well, representatives of the Princess Anne County Training School Union and Kempsville High Alumni and Friends Association, please come forward, and members of the Virginia African-American Cultural Center, please come forward. Welcome. Oh, please, come on up. Dr. Ross Hammond, please come up. Bruce, everybody. I am proud to read this proclamation on behalf of our council. People of African descent first arrived in Virginia four hundred years ago, and the first persons of African descent in Virginia Beach were likely to have been three individuals transported here by Captain Adam Thoroughgood by 1637. And whereas, the general commemoration of the historical contributions of the African-Americans in Virginia and elsewhere was first established as Negro History Week in 1926 by a native Virginian, Carter G. Woodson. And whereas, President General Gerald R. Ford expanded this commemoration in celebration to encompass Black History Month in 1976. And whereas, the theme of commemoration in 2020 is African-Americans and the vote. And whereas, the Fifteenth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States was ratified 150 years ago on February 3rd, 1870, providing constitutionally for the right to vote for the African-American men and women. Whereas granting the right to vote of the African-American men enabled the election of African-Americans to local, state, and federal offices. And whereas, several African-American men were elected to serve Princess Anne County and the Commonwealth of Virginia, including Willis Augustus Hodges, elected to the Virginia Constitutional Convention in 1867, John Q. Hodges, elected to the House of Delegates in 1869, and Littleton Owens, elected to the House of Delegates in 1879. And whereas, the Nineteenth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States was ratified 100 years ago on August 18th, 1920, provided constitutionally for the right for women, including African-American women. And whereas, the right to vote and the power afforded to the African-American voters was resisted in Virginia, and the laws were deliberately passed to disenfranchise African-American voters, requiring African-Americans to continually fight to have the right to vote. Whereas, African-Americans also continually fight for their right to public education. And whereas, African-American residents raised funds necessary to purchase land for the construction of high school for the education of their children in Princess Anne County. Whereas, the Princess Anne County Training School, later named Union Council High School, served this purpose and produced valued members of the community during an era of segregation from 1938 until 1969. And whereas, the Princess Anne Community Training School Union Kempsville High School Alumni and Friends Association Incorporated maintains the history and memories of the school and continues to serve our community. And whereas, the Princess Anne County Training School Union Kempsville High School Alumni and Friends Association Incorporated maintains the history and memories of the school and continues to serve our community. Whereas, African-Americans have overcome enslavement, discrimination, and adversity to make positive contributions in all areas of enterprise and service in Virginia Beach, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and the United States of America. Whereas, the mayor and city council support the establishment of an African-American cultural center in Virginia Beach as a hub for African-American culture and history, and have provided the deed, transfer, and title of property in Virginia Beach for that purpose. Therefore, I, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, do hereby proclaim February 2020 African-American Heritage Month. Thank you. (applause) Got something for you. Okay. Cape Town? Yes. Dr. Ross Hammond? Thank you. And thank you all on behalf of a grateful city and nation. Thank you, and God bless you. And now, we can, I understand, there are some Boy Scouts in the room. Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, come on forward with your leaders. Please come up, give your name, introduce yourself.
I'm Pam Samples, Assistant Scout Master with Troop 362.
Okay.
And these are our scouts.
Step up to the microphone. There you go.
I'm Pam Samples. I'm Assistant Scout Master with Troop 362 out of Kempsville, and these are our scouts. And we're learning about citizenship in the community today.
Oh, that is outstanding, the future of our country right here. And please, each one of you, come up, state your name.
I'm John Samples.
Welcome.
I'm Bill Samples.
I'm Jack Samples.
I'm Caleb Wyman.
I'm Hunter Hughes.
I'm Max Meisenhelder.
Ah, thank you. And come on up here, and on behalf of the city, we want to give you a pin to commemorate you being here. Come on forward. Thank you.
You can come up and take a picture.
I think we got a family affair here. There you go. Oh, thank you. Thanks for coming. Thank you. And you get one, too. Thanks for volunteering. God bless you. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to public hearings now, and the first one is going to be the lease of city property, 5.45 acres at Lynn Haven Inlet. And let me please read that this item was prematurely advertised and is not on the agenda for consideration. As such, more public outreach will take place, and an additional public hearing will be held at a future date.
There are no speakers signed up for that.
Okay. All right, number two, acquisition by agreement or condemnation, property temporarily and permanent easements necessary for Elbow Road Extended Phase II B Project, CIP number 2-152.
We have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Okay, item two, acquisition by agreement or condemnation. We're systematically acquiring property, condemning property, and most of the time it's for, you know, huge projects. This place, you know, we have flooding, we have uncontrolled growth, and I just oppose it's systematic, every single meeting, you know, either waiving or giving CIPs, you know, for all these projects. This agenda was 760 pages. I don't know if y'all broke a record for, you know, putting a lot of things on the agenda. So, that's all. I'm just opposed to the leasing of city property. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay, no other speaker?
No other speaker, sir.
All right, the next item, number three, is a polling place change, Brookwood Precinct to Brookwood Elementary School.
We have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Yeah, I just want to say on the African-American thing, I wish George Menz was here. He was a great leader. He was an excellent spokesperson, and he wanted to have the museum in Sea Tech, so I just want to mention him since it's, you know, African-American Month, and he was really intelligent, great fighter for the entire community, not just for blacks. On the polling place, it's under public hearing and ordinances. It's only, like, a month before the election. I don't understand why these polling changes are taking place during an election year. I don't know how you find these polling places, but this happens all the time. And this is less than a month, so it's not a lot of time for people to be aware of a polling change, and it's four months before the June primary. Thank you.
Thank you.
All the speakers, sir.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? I thought I read this change to be effective for the general election and not for the elections, the primaries coming up in June. Did I read it incorrectly? If you could answer it another day, I mean, I just...
I...
It's March.
Well, I'm looking for the...
March 10th.
That's the effective date of this change? I'm not asking when the primaries are, I'm asking when the effective date of the change is. My understanding was that it was effective for the primary, but if somebody from the... I just want to make sure. I mean, I think, you know, I know we don't have to go through Voting Rights Act validation any longer. In your agenda request form, it says this change will become effective upon approval by the city council, beginning with the March Democratic primary. Okay, thank you, I just remembered the number. Thank you.
Renovation.
Okay. Okay.
That's all the speakers.
That's it? Okay, at this time, I'm going to read the speaker policy. I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. When speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on any item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number to the clerk of record. Also, we have several items under ordinances resolution with only one speaker up. As such, the city clerk will call the speaker and identify each item that they have registered on. The speaker will receive three minutes to comment on each item. Okay? Now, before, as we go to ordinances resolutions, have any speakers, solo speakers?
Yes, sorry, Eddie. We have one speaker, Barbara Messner, on J. 1, 3, 4, 5, and 6B.
Three and four are being heard.
I'm sorry, okay. Thank you.
It'll be just J. 1, 5...
J. 1, 5, 6B.
Welcome back.
You keep forgetting to bring up one of those coins that you give out. I don't even know what they look like. Okay, J. 1. I've already spoken on this, on the polling places, and I think June 10th, for this to come up, you know, is ridiculous, and it happens every single year. Andrew Jackson used to speak out against this, but he's stopped speaking out against most things that y'all are doing. Okay, on item three?
No, that...
No, okay, yeah, because there's speakers on that.
Number five.
Okay.
Five.
I signed up on four.
Were there speakers?
We're going to hear...
That one's pulled due, okay. That's what I need to know. Authorized temporary encroachments into a portion of city property known as Bass Inlet at the rear of 2901 Sandpiper Road, reconstruction and maintain a pier. Someone else was checking into that because... But the main thing is, we're just giving encroachments, portions of city property to private people. And anybody that looks at what the north end used to look like, what Middle Beach used to look like, when you start encroaching and doing away with land, it's just high density. It's terrible. So, that's five. Which other one, are there no other speakers on?
6B.
6B? Okay. $30,000 from Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services to 2019, 2020 budget, Police Department Operating Budget, Ray, overtime, purchase of equipment, travel, and training to enhance efforts to address internet crimes against children. I guess everyone saw the megachurch, the Philippine megachurch bust in the area. It just seems like there's a lot of crime in this area, and $30,000 isn't a lot of money, but, you know, most of these busts are coming from Homeland Security. So, I don't have a problem with it, I just don't understand why the budgets aren't... Why you don't prepare for budgets each year, why you have to change things. That's the last one, right? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Wood, the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for approval under the consent agenda, under ordinances resolutions. Item one, ordinance to amend City Code Section 10-1, Ray, Brookwood Precinct polling place to Brookwood Elementary School. Item J. 2, resolution to accept the final Hampton Roads region Norfolk and Virginia Beach joint land use study. Item J. 5, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments on a portion of city property known as Bass Inlet at the rear of 2901 Sandpiper Road regarding construct and maintain a pier. Item six, ordinance to accept and appropriate A, $173,233 from the Virginia Department of Agricultural and Community Services to the FY 1920 Agricultural Reserve Program Special Revenue Fund Operating Budget regarding reimburse for cost to acquire preservation easement. Item 6B, $30,000 from Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services to the FY 1920 Police Department Operating Budget regarding overtime, purchase of equipment, travel, and training to enhance efforts to address internet crimes against children.
Okay, is my understanding will apply to planning items?
No, we got one.
Okay.
Go on, in a public hearing.
Okay, which one? Okay, no, okay, call a public hearing on planning?
Under planning, item K. 2, Town Center Associates 12 LLC for conditional use permit regarding indoor recreation facility at 4621 Columbus Street in Lynn Haven District. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, have a second? Okay, any discussion? The vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay, the first item to hear under ordinances and resolutions, item three, resolutions to oppose House Bill 152 and any similar bill that negates limits single-family zoning districts requested by Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, and Councilmember Moss.
We have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
I was under the impression that there were going to be other speakers here because I spoke to people who were in opposition, but at least they gave me the information. Oppose House Bill 152 and any similar bill that negates or limits single-family zoning districts requested by Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, and Councilmember Moss. Mr. Dyer and Mr. Wood are both up for reelection. Okay, this, from what I was told, this would mean, and it takes more than three people to oppose it, to pass, so that if this passes, there'll be no rules for what can be built on it. So, even though they aren't here, they were in opposition, but, you know, people can only come to so many meetings. Y'all have meetings almost every single day. Thank you.
Thank you.
All the speakers, sir.
Mr. Moss?
Is there no speaker?
No other speakers.
Well, first of all, this bill was introduced into the General Assembly, it wasn't about taking away rights or to prohibit us from having single-family districts. What effect would do? It would create a by right so that anyone who was on a single zoning, R. 2.5, R. 40, whatever, that they would be entitled to build a second structure, a second home on their lot. So, look around your neighborhood and think, look to the right, would you want to see two houses there? Look to the left, would you want to see two houses there? And this bill introduced into the General Assembly would have given every property owner at the single-family zoned parcel to put two homes on their lot. I haven't seen a lot of receptive support in Virginia Beach for that, and it got tabled, I wish it had been defeated. It got tabled in committee, and someone says, what's the difference between being tabled and being defeated? When it's tabled, it can be brought back at any time. When it's defeated, it's really done for the session, so there is a subtle but important difference. Now, crossover, which means bills that go from the House to the Senate, occurs on the 11th of February, if I stand correct. And so, in the light that this got tabled in the House, and I'm not aware of a corresponding bill in the Senate, in consultation with Mike Belushi and also with Aaron Rouse and with other members of council, we feel that we can safely, I won't say not do it, but defer this item, and if it resurrects itself on crossover, we will address this issue then. But it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to, you know, to waste our powder, so to speak, or shoot a silver bullet when the wisdom of the people in the committee realize this wasn't a good bill statewide, and it's been tabled. So with that, I would move for its deferral to February 18th, because that's after crossover, and then we'll know whether or not we have an issue in the Senate.
Second. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse and Mr. Belushi.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? The vote is open for a deferral.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have deferred the resolution to February 18th, 2020.
Okay, next up, item number four, ordinances to designate as exempt real and personal property taxes deferred from December 21st, 2020. Mr. Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked this...
We have a speaker.
Do we have a speaker?
Yes. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
My apologies.
Barbara Messner.
Good evening, Mr. Rouse. You know, at the meeting when everyone was discussing all the problems with the short-term rentals, you said you weren't in favor of deferring something, and I think when something's on the agenda, I see no reason why, if people were opposed, why we didn't have a vote. So, you know, some of us can't keep coming all the time. I'm tired of coming, but, you know, I see what's on the agenda, and I feel it's my duty to speak up. And I was here on the 21st, ordinance to designate and exempt real and personal property taxes deferred from January 21st. DC Art Institute of Virginia Beach LLC, DC South University of Virginia LLC, In Home Health LLC. We give too many tax grants and exemptions. We have three, two billion debt. I guess I'm ahead of myself. I guess next year it'll be three billion. We shouldn't be giving debt for, you know, tax exemptions when we're taxed. You know, we have fees, fines, taxes. So, I'm opposed, and I do remember Mr. Stiles saying this was a 9-2 supermajority vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
All the speakers.
Okay, Mr. Moss?
Well, I think I have shared with a number of you, and I know I've shared exhaustively on Facebook, the financial capacity of these institutions and the compensation for their executives, which in one case was over a million dollars. And I do believe that given the financial balance statements of these nonprofits and the substantial, but their call, compensation of their officers, which I could go into detail if people would like, but I shared it on Facebook, that these are organizations that are much better positioned to pay their taxes than senior citizens and low-income people in our community who don't get exempt for taxes, and I would move these exemption requests be denied.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yeah.
Sorry, Amanda?
I just need a clarification. Are we voting on A, B, and C separately?
I should have said all three. I apologize for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, just for the purposes of clarifying remarks that I made previously during the workshop discussion on this topic, at that time I issued what I think I would describe as a very full-throated argument in support of nonprofits in our community, and I don't want anything I say to detract from my enthusiasm for those remarks, because I have, as many of you do, and many of you who are here tonight have many, lots of associations with nonprofits, and they're so important to the health of our community and to our economy as well. And it's really incumbent upon us to do everything we can to support the work they do. And I guess that I'm just used to working with nonprofits with such limited resources that it escaped me that the three on this list could have such vast resources. And I also didn't realize until I had a conversation with Councilmember Moss that this council has a discretion that it may exempt some organizations from those taxes and that it's not a matter of course. And so, I just want to thank Councilmember Moss for bringing this to my attention and for educating me on the nuance there, and I fully agree with your conclusions and appreciate your diligence on this and education. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Belushi. Okay, any other... Okay, guy?
I think it probably should be said that this, and certainly in my vote, in no way is to criticize or denigrate the mission of these organizations. It's not intended to be judgmental in that regard at all. It simply is a matter of ability to pay and fairness to the community and the organizations as well.
Anybody else? Okay, vote is open. Okay, vote is open.
This is to deny.
To deny, right.
This is for to deny. An affirmative vote is to deny.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've denied the applications for the tax exempt.
Okay, we're moving on to planning items. Okay, first item up is Greg Mc Mackin Mills Collins LC for conditional use permit, Ray Bulk Storage Yard at forty-one forty-five Virginia Beach Boulevard, District Five, Lynnhaven.
Our speaker is Greg Mc Mackin.
Hello, how you doing? Greg Mc Mackin, the applicant. I just want to bring it to your attention, I didn't prepare financially for this, I've been at this location for ten years, and got one complaint, so the city came out and saw a pile of wood, so I cleared all the logs there, still have a little bit of firewood left there, some trash, but a lot of it has been cleared out, they've stopped by and taken pictures, so I'm pretty much done, is all I could do at this point.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Tejón, can you put the recent photos up? These are from-
Those are the new ones.
Okay, that just popped up, okay, good. So it looks like you've got most everything clean, I drove by there yesterday, it looks like everything, or a lot of the stuff is gone, for the most part, I see the containers are still there, and that's, I worked with the owner and everything on that. Do we have other speakers?
No, sir. I'm sorry, we do, yes, one more.
Okay, all right. Maybe we can get the other speaker up and then-
Sure. Barbara Messner?
I'm only speaking for one reason, and that is, there are twenty-three items, other than this one, conditional use permits, short-term rentals, and it took like thirty minutes or a half hour, and I was really upset because it shouldn't have come from planning. Mr. Tejón didn't even have the pictures to show you of what it looked like, there were still problems, and it just, you know, it just takes up too much time. This is, you know, this is deferred, and I just, I don't know, I just don't understand why y'all would allow somebody, because you talked about, you know, the problem with the decaying wood and everything. So a lot of people have problems with their property, and I just think things shouldn't come to you if they aren't, you know, they shouldn't come for approval if it's not ready to be approved, that's the only reason I'm speaking, because it took too much time.
If I could, Mr. Mayor-
Yes, Mr. Wood.
So Mr. Stiles or Mr. Tejón, one of the two of y'all, so this is a two-year CUP, for two years, what is the, because I spoke with some of the neighbors, and I know they were trying to get somebody to come and speak tonight, but they, apparently they were, they told me they were happy with the progress so far that Mr. Mc Mackin has made, but my question is, is if there are issues before this two-year process, how will they be addressed? And I guess that's probably to-
Mr. Wood, the items could be addressed through a zoning violation and also through solid waste potentially with housing. However, we can also, if there's consistent and persistent problems, we can bring it back for revocation of the conditional use permit sooner than-
Okay, and specifically with Mr. Mc Mackin's use of the property, there are things there that aren't his, that are the owner's, so you'll address that separately from the CUP?
Those are actually conditions in here that needs to be addressed, because the conditional use permit goes to the property as well for that timeframe, so they must comply with all those conditions.
Okay.
All right, well, I mean, that being said, I'd move approval.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, but I would hope that before we, this is a very industrious, you know, self-motivated business operator, and I would hope that before we did anything too, you would come back and let us know in advance, because I think this council has a lot of compassion for people who are trying to make things work, and those are the kind of citizens we want to encourage. So we want to do what's right, but we don't want to do with a heavy hand, I think you got the word, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment? The vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've approved the application of Greg Mc Mackin and Mills Collins LC.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, next item, K three, CEBT Properties LLC for conditional use permits, raise short-term rentals, hat. Okay, do them all, A, three seventeen twenty-six and a half Street, B, three twenty twenty-seven Street, and three twenty twenty-six and a half Street, C, six seventeen twenty-third Street, units one and five, District Five, Beach. Mr. Tower? Oh, okay, sorry.
Our speaker is Eddie Bergdahl.
Hey, Eddie, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. For the record, Eddie Bergdahl, Jim's attorney, representing the applicant. Before I get started, Council, I'm representing Chris Ettle and Bob Taylor on these applications. Your other, the cases four, five, and six are also the same folks, except for six just involves Chris Ettle. I'm gonna, if it's all right with you all, make my comments apply to all cases except five. Five will be done a little bit separately, but that way I don't stand up here and talk on all of them, because I think it's all the same. Five I will do when it comes up on the agenda, because there's one little quirk on that one that's different than the rest. There are a number of people who've signed up tonight to speak in favor of these applications, and they also, if it's all right with the council, would just speak once, you know, on these first ones, rather than come up and speak on each one of them and say the same thing over and over again. So that's what I propose to do. Mr. Ettle and Mr. Taylor are lifelong residents and business owners in the city of Virginia Beach. Their companies and their families have been very civically active in this community for many, many, many decades. They have invested heavily in the redevelopment and the revitalization of Old Beach, and these applications for conditional use permits for short-term rentals meet every criteria or requirement in the ordinance that City Council enacted to regulate short-term rentals in our city. As I said, there's a petition of support that we provided to the clerk, and again, we've had a number of speakers in support. Your planning staff reviewed these applications, and I'm talking about three A, B, and C, as well as four and six A and B, and they, in every, each case, they recommended approval, and in each case, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval with no discussion and with no opposition at the Planning Commission hearings on their consent agenda. The conditions were all conditions that were recommended to your Planning Commission and come before you from your city staff. One of those, that we don't object to, and no one objects to, that no one, I think, has even really talked about, is the fact that the limit, the limitation on each one is for five years. They're just five-year conditional use permits, they're not in perpetuity. Also, I advised the Planning Commission on my client's applications, when it was on the consent agenda, I said, you know, recognize that one of these conditions says you can't have more than fifty people on, you know, in the property anytime, and talks about events, it comes out of Sandbridge, or the, I guess, the state legislature, what they did for Sandbridge. But my clients, you know, in their agreements will not allow and do not allow more than twenty people to be present anywhere on the property at one time, and certainly they abide by the occupancy requirements as set forth by the Fire Marshal's Office, so this fifty thing is a non, you know, doesn't even have a relevance. And they also, in their agreements, you know, specifically prohibit events or parties, and they've invested a lot of money in these properties, and they don't want them to be torn up and in any way create a problem for a neighborhood in which they are heavily invested in its redevelopment, and it's continuing to become revitalized. Cases, case three C involves a five-apartment, you know, building that has the two applications that are in five C are each for one-bedroom apartments, and obviously, once again, you couldn't, you couldn't have more than five or six people in there for a short period of time, much less occupying it, so that condition about fifty persons is just, you know, it's just kind of ludicrous. I'm not being critical, I'm just simply pointing it out for the council's benefit. But all the conditions are acceptable to my client, if the council wants to make any modifications to those conditions, we'd be more than willing to entertain that, but with that, we would, we think we've met all the criteria set forth in the ordinance in every way, and they've been recommended for approval.
Any more speakers on three?
Yes, well, the next speaker is Lisa Yor.
Welcome.
Hi, how are you? Mayor Dyer, members of City Council, I am in support of the applicant's request for short-term rental conditional use permit. While I understand the city's newly implemented CPUs regulations of putting a cap of three people per bedroom to regulate house parties for STRs, I have been a property manager for numerous vacation rentals over the past five summers coming up on six, and I've never had any issues with any parties. Actually, I have found just the opposite. Of all of the guests that I have had in the rentals that I manage are families or extended families on vacation, family and friends, family and friends coming to Virginia Beach to attend weddings, or friends getting together here for one of our local runs or festivals. Also, I have never had any issues with any property damage, nor have I ever had any complaints from any of the neighbors. In my opinion, vacationers want and like the feeling of staying in a home versus staying in a hotel, and take care of the property as if it were their own. In addition, we do have a no-party policy, so that, I've never had any issues there. So I hope that this answers any of your questions that may arise coming from a property manager's standpoint.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Next speaker is Joyce Sitko. And then the next speaker will be George Sitko.
Welcome. How you doing?
I'm just fine, and I approve of the applicant having the short-term rentals. I look around my neighborhood, that I moved here twenty-five years ago, and I had a ten-unit apartment building, and I did short terms, and the properties around me, on every side, were short-term rentals, and they were dilapidated, I mean, they had mice, they were not taken care of, and he has just revitalized the neighborhood, it just is wonderful. I look out my doors, and I see the summer people, they drive in, they drive out, they have children, barbecues in the yard, and they're just enjoying life at the beach, and they go home, tell their friends, and they bring more people back, and I'm just real happy with it, and I approve. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
The next speaker is George Sitko, and then Fay Markert.
Good evening, good evening. I live at four oh two twenty-six and a half Street, Chris Ettle built my home, and he, he's been wonderful as far as getting things done, and just, my wife just mentioned also that I agree that we've had, we've had any problems in the four years that he's had the short term in our neighborhood, and I'm not doing short term right now, you know, we're, you know, leasing, renting one long-term and living in one, and they're all around us, and nobody has any issues. It's been better for off-street parking, you know, because we used to have an apartment building, people parked along the street, and, you know, we only had three parking spots. Now they're gone, you know, it's actually opened up the neighborhood, the street, and it's been a lot, big improvements, and like I said, no crime, the litter is gone, everybody picks up, you know, if there isn't anything, and I haven't had any complaint, I'm for it, you know, and we could use the tax too, you know, and whatnot, on that. And so I'm really, I've been here twenty-five years, and this has been the biggest improvement in Old Beach I've seen, you know, that's all I want to say.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Fay Markert. And then the next speaker will be Frank Ramikers.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
My name is Fay Markert, and I live at three twenty-one twenty-sixth Street, and I'm here to speak in favor of the applicant. I have a short-term rental directly across from my house, and then I have two behind me, and I have just really enjoyed having the short-term renters there, like the other lady spoke, it's families coming into town, and you just see them really enjoying themselves. I mean, I've loaned bicycles, bike locks, we have a dog, so we walk a lot around where the short-term rentals are, and we actually, you know, see the people sitting on the porch, and, you know, there's people there from all over the United States, and like I said, I just enjoy meeting them, talking with them, we've had people over for dinner before for the short-term renters, and I am in favor of it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Frank Ramikers. And then Barbara Messner.
Welcome.
Hello, good evening, thank you for your time. I reside at twenty-six in Baltic with my family in a historical home, which we've purchased five years ago and have remodeled, and have owned and also managed a combination of thirteen homes and apartments, all located in the Old Beach on twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh Street for the past five years. The improvements in the homes that the STRs have been, they've added a tremendous asset to our neighborhood, the improvements have been dramatic. The removal of the older homes and the buildings that were problematic have been replaced with beautiful homes, professionally maintained, professionally landscaped, thus creating a welcoming clientele to the Old Beach neighborhood. In reference to the events or the parties that we, that have been commented about, we have never had any, over hundreds of reservations that, or guests' reservations that we have had, I have never had any problems with parties or events. We don't allow them, and they are controlled, so the homes are monitored and controlled at all times. Thank you, appreciate it, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Barbara Messner. And then Nancy Parker.
Yeah, I don't know how many people, you know, that spoke, there were a lot of speakers at the last meeting who were opposed for so many reasons. Everybody's jumping on the bandwagon. Ms. Parker, who is the next council member, she's into real estate, she has rental property, almost everyone that spoke is profiting from this. We have a hotel industry, we have so many hotels, and I just think it's fast-tracking, everybody wants to make money, and we're losing the neighborhoods. I lived in this area for ten and a half years, like I said, there's still flooding there. Chris Ettle, he's a very successful builder, I think you said Bob Taylor, Taylor's Do-It Center, I think he's on the rack, the Taylors have been on the rack, council-appointed rack. Like I said, there's problems with flooding, traffic, parking, and, you know, all these people that spoke, they have, or almost all of them are making money with rental property, there's nothing wrong with that, but it's moved into the city, taking a piece of it, and everybody wanting to join in it, and we're losing the neighborhoods. And several of y'all are aware that you are funded by some of the people in your, Ms. Wilson is in the tourism business, you know, selling condos, and so, anyway, I just oppose, there's just too many, there's twenty-four today, twenty-four units today, that is a lot, on top of, I forget how many it was last time, thank you.
Nancy Parker.
Sorry, I think you want to speak generally, is that right?
Good evening, Nancy.
Good evening, how are you all tonight? Mayor Dyer and members of City Council, I do not come to speak on any one STR, but from the macro perspective of the impacts of the neighborhoods and the very lax regulations, and obviously, some of these folks have stepped forward and even moved beyond what the regulations and have tightened them up, and I appreciate what they felt to do in the neighborhoods. Our greatest city asset is strong, safe, and peaceful neighborhoods, which serves as the foundation for all other city functions. Yet tonight, the council's decision on a number of short-term rental applications will profoundly affect the entire fabric of all your neighborhoods. You have twenty-six requests- You have twenty-six requests tonight with more waiting. This will become Pandora's box for the neighborhoods with the present regulations. On January the twenty-first, council made the decision to approve a short-term rental in one neighborhood while denying it in another. The denial was hinged on issues raised by Councilman Jones, which were legitimate and should apply to all neighborhoods. Obviously, the present regulations governing short-term rentals are not in the best interest of any neighborhood's stability and tranquility. During the arduous and sometimes contentious proceedings in the development of short-term rental regulations, only Councilwoman Barbara Henley spoke up for the neighborhoods and laid out the consequences. These were ignored while a handful of owners and investors in the Sandbridge dominated the conversation. Once again, lobbyists are now working in the General Assembly to further weaken the council's oversight with House Bill sixteen eighty-five, sponsored by Representative Barry Knight. I noticed that tonight you had on your agenda House Bill one fifty-two, which you deferred, which also attacks the council's ability to control, supposing that one got attention and the other one hasn't yet. Any regulation should have been slanted towards the protection of all neighborhoods and included not to be limited to the questions of proliferation of short-term rentals in a specific area, restrictions of on-street parking, intrusive noise and music affecting the peace of the adjoining neighbors, and lower occupancy limitations. Violations should have substantial fines and be payable by the owner, who is ultimately responsible, since they obtained the conditional use permit, unless, of course, House sixteen eighty-five bill passes, and then what? Should you vote yes for one next to, would you vote next for one next to you with the present guidelines, which permits the party to occur every day with up to fifty people and music between ten AM and ten PM? If you won't, then don't ask it of your citizens. Short-term rentals may be a part of the travel options, but they must not dominate nor override the tranquility and the character of the communities. They are a business. Your first priority must be your citizens and your neighborhoods, and obviously, good strong neighborhoods are what draw people to our, our community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Sarah.
Good night, Nancy.
Mr. Burdon.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, I, I, Ms. Parker appeared on some of these applications, and likewise at Planning Commission and did not oppose them ma- mating, making a larger point. I would suggest attempting to, to revisit the couple of years that you all spent, so it seems anyway, coming up with these regulations. And as, as I've said to many, many people, it's, it's a, pretty much an impossible task without some changes in the law from the state level, because the Supreme Court's been very clear that a residential property is a residential property regardless of how long you occupy it. So it's, you're, you're in a thankless position as it comes to this particular issue. My clients in this circumstance are very outstanding, very well-respected businessmen who have invested a tremendous amount of money in, in this area and will continue to do so, and they have met and addressed every single condition as set forth in your ordinance, and that's why these applications come before you with recommendations for approval. And if I'm not mistaken, I think the council's only heard two applications under this ordinance a couple of weeks ago. So I don't think that there's been, at this point, any overabundance of approved applications. Be happy to answer any questions if you all want to talk about conditions, we're more than happy to do that as well.
Any questions for Mr. Burdon? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, Mr. Tower.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move the approval of the applications that are before you with the, with, with the change that the conditions, and I will specify them for the record here, that condition number three in items three A and three B, condition number two in items three C, conditions number seven in items four, condition six, number three in item six A and condition three in item six B be replaced with the following language: No events with more than the permitted number of people who may stay overnight, parentheses, number of bedrooms times three, closed parenthesis, shall be held at the short-term rental unit or the property on which it is located. This short-term rental may not request or obtain a special event permit under City Code Section Four hyphen one, paren eight, lowercase a, close paren.
Okay, the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. John.
Well, Mr. Burdon was correct. We have a thankless task, and certainly not as profitable as one representing the landowners. But, but I think Mrs. Parker wasn't due justice when she, because I think she tried to talk about the larger issues, which we can't legally deal with tonight, which I, which was the point you were really making. But the point that you didn't make was, did the staff and their evaluation do their homework and provide this staff, this city council, the empirical data analysis relative to the criteria upon which we can legally judge, to make a decision that's in the best interest of the public? That's a standard that you cannot impose, but this council can. And in that regard, which I have expressed in a different forum, the analysis that we received, or the lack of analysis that we received, did not provide me the basis by which, against the standard, the larger statutory standard, by which these should be assessed in order to make sure that the larger public interest was being served. Having been denied that analytical basis and the lack of curiosity on part of the Planning Commission, the public wasn't due the justice they deserve. These applications may still deserve to be approved, but go look at the packet online, go look at the statute, go look at the criteria, and judge for yourself whether or not this body got the linear feet of these neighborhoods. Were they an RPV or not? How many cars are registered to the residents? How many parking spaces are on the street? There's just lots of things, the dimensions of the bedrooms, lots of things we could talk about that would give this council discretion as to how to apply the legal standards that Mr. Burdon replied to, but this body was denied that analytical depth, and in fact, got a very cursory stamp of the city ordinances. And on that basis, you know, I would, I just can't vote for something that I don't understand the impact on the public, and it's the lack of homework on the staff's part that I'm voting no.
Okay, any other discussion? Mr. Tower.
I, I'll, I'll second the thankless task. I usually say when somebody says, oh, you have a thankless job, city council, I say, that's not true at all. People thank me all the time for doing it, much more than I deserve. But this one is, is, this one's tough. I live near enough to these neighborhoods where most of these applications are that I drive by them multiple times a week and usually multiple times a day. I, I'm trying to balance the, the equities of those people that have bought or improved their homes in anticipation of this, of this ordinance going into effect in November with the concerns of the existing residents about it. I'm happy to hear that there are people that think it's all gone great. I know that there are some people, like Ms. Parker said, who are very concerned about their neighborhoods. I'm concerned about them. I recall at kickoff of my campaign for this seat, I think the first thing I said was, I think the neighborhoods are the real strength of Virginia Beach. They have an unusual number of very proud neighborhoods and very different characters, but everyone's very proud of their neighborhood and seems to take good care of it and cares about it and wants to make it a better place, and that's, that makes being on city council a lot easier. The motion that I've made is to approve the, these particular permits, and I would intend to make it, pending what action gets taken by council on these, with the remaining units as well. I was not signaling them out, these are just the first ones that came out. And they are intended to put to rest the idea that any of these houses, in the Old Beach District anyway, are anywhere near suitable for having parties, not to, of fifty people or, or a lot fewer. So the motion is to limit the number to the, the occupancy that is permitted. In other words, if you have three bedrooms and three, and the occupancy's permitted is nine, three people times three, that's the most people you can have in the house, period. So I, I thought that was a simple way to kind of keep the numbers down to a reasonable amount. Given the traffic, the parking, the narrowness of the roads, the quiet neighborhoods that these are in, I just want to make sure that they remain that way to the maximum extent possible while being fair to those applicants that have, have, have taken action. They have no rights by law, but I think in terms of equity and fairness, they have some reason to think that if we let this ordinance stand as long as we did without dealing, changing it, that they could, they could rely on that. And some have gone further. This is not to say that I don't think that, that further action could be taken on these ordinances to make them better and improve them, and, and I would say that about any ordinance. It isn't written in stone, it isn't written in blood. I think we ought to look further at them and see whether they need to be changed. There were sixteen hundred and fifty-seven of these units grandfathered under the council ordinance, so these are not the first to come. These are, these are following on the heels. So even with a hundred or a hundred and forty, however many we have in the pipeline, it's a small percentage compared to the ones that are already grandfathered, and I think that also figures into what, what we ought to be looking at. We didn't know how many really would be grandfathered when the ordinance was passed. Now that we know that, and we know how many we've got initially, we may need to take another look at it. That's all I have.
Okay, Rose Mayor.
Just for clarification, we're going to vote on three, A, B, and C, four, and six. Six, A and B.
A and B. My only question, I just want to make sure that people thought about three, that there wasn't anybody in the audience that maybe misunderstood and didn't want to speak on either four or six, since the initial announcement was just for the one item read into the record.
Yeah, do we have any other speakers on those other items?
Ms. Messner.
Okay, so we do have.
Would you speak on all of them?
Yeah, let's, let's take each one individually, you know, just for clarity purposes.
Okay. So will we call each of those speakers back up?
No.
No, no, no. We'll, we'll just, you know, make a motion on three, then we'll go from there. Yeah, Barbara?
Well, I know since we're just beginning to look at applications that maybe we have some uncertainties here, but, you know, I think it's, I don't think that the ordinance that was passed was a guarantee that these particular things would all be allowed for all properties. And I do think if we're properly going to look at circumstances such as safety and health and, and welfare and the general welfare of the community, we really have to look at what each property offers individually, and we don't have that. I think to say that a three-bedroom house could have up to three people per bedroom may not apply if the rooms are very small, or, you know, if the house is very small, or if the parking is, is pretty hard to achieve. So I really think we have to look at, at more specifics with, with each of these things. It's very, very difficult to think that every property who has a certain number of bedrooms or whatnot is suitable in a neighborhood that has perhaps very close neighbors or specific things that we need to be looking at, that there, that it's the same for all of them. And I agree with Mr. Moss that we need more information, but I, I really have a lot of concern that we went very, very far in the ordinance, and that shouldn't be what's a guarantee or expected from everyone, because I do think we have to look at the effect it's going to have on the people who live there or who come to visit there, and make sure their safety is adequately covered, since we can't require things that we would normally require of lodging, since it's a single-family residence. But we still need to be concerned about their safety, and we need to be concerned about the affected neighbors. And just to think that we have to apply the same standards to everyone, I think it's not, not reasonable.
Okay. Any other comment? Okay, at this point, the...
Who are we voting on? Do we have any other speakers?
Do we have any other?
Ms. Messner signed up on each of the three A, B, and C, four, and six. So...
Yeah, okay.
Did she want to speak again?
Well, would you like to come to, to speak on the other ones? Madam Clerk, specify what she's speaking to, please.
Sure.
Okay, you said...
Three A, B, and C.
Okay. I appreciate Mr. Tower's, you know, comments last week. You seemed a little surprised at everything, but I think since you are, you know, there's at least sixteen with your name on it, you know, in the oceanfront area, and since Mr. Moss brought up great points in this time, and Ms. Henley did last time, it, it doesn't apply to everyone. Some people are good neighbors, and, and other people are just absentee landlords who want to make money. It's obvious. And if it wasn't for this something in the water, which I'm not thrilled with, we wouldn't even be having this problem. The two-hundred-and-fifty thousand that you gave Pharrell, he goes on TV and says, hey, everybody sign up for Airbnb. He goes on TV, you know, how you make money. This is just a money-making thing for some people, and, you know, it's an excellent point that some people, you know, have been making money, you know, like at Sandbridge, and they're responsible people. But you know the problems with Sandbridge? That goes back to when Don Weeks built the first event house. There were lawsuits way back then. You can't build event houses and expect air police to keep track of everything. They've been understaffed forever. We had a major fire in, in Red Wing yesterday. There were fifteen emergency vehicles there. They got there in a hurry, and they did an excellent job. They, they worked really hard. Air police, fire, and rescue are already overworked. They've spoken to you since 2018 about their benefits, and we're just putting extra burdens on these people. They can't be everywhere, and you want year-round tourism. So, and this is, you know, I spent ten and a half years on Twenty-Fourth Street. I know the area pretty well, and I know what happens. I still go there all the time, you know. I, you know, still have a P.O. box, and I, I go to the beach, I, I shop there, but it isn't, you know, what they did to, they named it Old Beach Neighborhood, and they just blocked off the streets. People get frustrated. We have reckless drivers. You just can't add this, all these problems and expect air, you know, first responders to be able to take care of it. Thank you.
That's all the speakers.
Okay, at this point, if we can vote on items three, four, and six with, you know, recommended by Mr. Tower with his modifications for approval, and we have a second.
So just to clarify, that's three A, B, and C, four and six A and B, just for the record.
That is correct. Okay, at this point, the vote is open?
By a vote of eight to three, approve the, the applications for three A, B, and C, four and six. A and B, sorry.
Okay, we're coming back to item five. Okay, and that is C EBT Properties LLC, VB Homes Design Built LLC for a conditional use... use permit, raise short-term rental at four-hundred A Twenty-Seven Street, District Six Beach. Mr. Burdon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and thank you for your consideration on the previous applications. The, again, same applicant, Mr. Taylor and Mr. Edel, who are, they're excellent examples of people who've put, invested lots of money in trying to upgrade and have succeeded, as has the city, as has our planning staff over many years with what's been done with Old Beach and with some tweaks in our zoning ordinance to allow the type of development that's taking place here, which is excellent. Actually set the table for the same thing at the north end, having the two smaller dwellings on one lot. But is absolutely correct, as Councilman Tower suggested, these are not, and at no point does my client have any desire or intent that they become any type of an event house or a party house. And in fact, with the condition that was, the conditions, the condition that was added, the reality is that anybody else in the neighborhood is not bound by that restriction other than short-term rentals. So it actually is a plus, not just, again, that's not a complaint, but it's a plus. If you live there year-round, your house, you can have people over any time you want, as many as you want. So, you know, it's actually a positive with that restriction, which my clients are accepting of. This is an application, the only reason I had this one pulled is because the staff on this application, for one reason and one reason only, had recommended denial, and that was because the third required parking space was on this property with one foot of that parking space on the adjacent property that they own. And with a easement for that one by eighteen-foot strip for that extra parking space, and the Planning Commission recommended unanimously, because it is a space that will one-hundred percent absolutely be used, and it is a space that is not in the public right-of-way. And so I wanted to bring that out, just so there was, I didn't want to make the blanket statement that staff approved every one, blah, blah, blah. But there is otherwise no difference between that application and its location and in the two brand-new dwellings, but the one next door is not in the short-term rental, and it meets every single criteria of, for stormwater drainage, impervious surface, and city attorney's office has to review the parking easement. Again, the parking space is nine by eighteen feet, and one foot of the nine is, you know, on the other properties, right, the property line, with a easement in perpetuity for that parking space. If you happen to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Burdon, I just want to make sure those speakers that spoke earlier, you did not call them back up?
All of the, all the speakers in favor, or their remarks applied to all the applications that they don't need to come back?
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify. So, the only other speaker is Barbara Masser.
Five. Yeah, he mentioned Chris Edel, who's been a builder for decades, Bob Taylor, Taylors Do-It, you know, since the nineties, I think, some of the Taylor people have been on the rack, council-appointed rack. This is all resort. Most of y'all are funded. Many of y'all are funded by the resort industry. Mr. Rouse and Mr. Tower, you know, Wardermans, you know, they want all these things. Everything has just gotten out of hand. I'm going to bring something up. Talking about who has, who should have conflicts, no one abstains. Mr. Dyer, you've run before unopposed, and I brought up, you know, after the last meeting, on the twenty-first, you had a, you left early. You didn't stay for the whole meeting because you had a cough. But then the next night, you had, you know, fundraiser at Town Center. Steven Ballard, Eddie Burdon, Josh Canada, Morgan Davis, Tom Franz, Nero from Armada Hoffler, Vince Mistraco, Fred Napolitano. You know, we just can't have big-money people running air city and overdeveloping it and y'all going along with it without even abstaining. And you have another meeting, another event with Kenny Alexander, I believe on the twenty-eighth in Norfolk. Everything's regional, and most people just give up. They don't even bother to come here anymore. But I don't, because, you know, I'm appalled at what I see and the conflicts and what y'all have done to air city. I, as a forty-year resident, I care, and I don't like the crime, and I, you know, I don't like the way the city's run. Thank you.
That's all the speakers. Ms. Mr. Burdon, would you like to come up for rebuttal?
Okay. Mr. Tower?
Yeah, I move the approval of item five, with the exception that I would substitute for condition number eight, the following language, "No events with more than the permitted number of people who may stay overnight, the number of bedrooms times three shall be held at the short-term rental unit or the property on which it's located, and the short-term rental may not request or obtain a special event permit under City Code Section four-dash-one-eight-A."
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion? John?
I'm not going to repeat my prior statement, because it's going to apply to all my votes, but I do want to say in light of some of the remarks made, that I respect the judgment of each people who bring to this issue. I think these are honorable issues, honorable differences. All of us have different evidentiary standards of analysis that we apply to work. It's not my place to judge the votes of others. The public can watch this and make those conclusions for themselves, but I just want to acknowledge, I don't think anyone up here is motivated by anything, then otherwise than doing what they think is best, given the information that they have.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could ask, if I may ask a question of the Planning Department, because the staff recommended denial, would you mind explaining a little bit about your recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Belucci. Staff recommended denial because the plan, the parking plan that was presented did not provide technically the, all three of the parking spaces on-site. As Mr. Burdon relayed to you, one foot of one of the parking spaces on, adjacent to the building, down the side of the building, is on the adjacent property. The Planning Commission recommended approval, subject to them obtaining a parking easement over top of it so that the space will meet the minimum size requirements, which is where the difference was. Staff was trying to have a clear line to understand where we can recommend approval and denial.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, at this point, vote is open.
By a vote of eight to three, approve the application, number five, C EBT Properties, Virginia Beach Design Built LLC.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to planning item seven, Joshua A. Lapolt for a conditional use permit, raise short-term rental at two-five oh-eight Mediterranean Avenue, District Six.
I don't have a car for the applicant. Are you the applicant, sir? Okay, come on up.
Okay, welcome.
Hey, thank you. I don't have anything really to add, and everything's kind of been spoken about. I've had no problems with this property. It's our only short-term rental. We've been doing it for about two years.
Could you speak up, please?
Could you speak up a little bit, please? Thank you.
Yes, this is a short-term rental property that I solely owned. I don't have any more. We've been renting it for about two years, and we haven't had any issues with it. I think it meets all the requirements, and if you guys have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer anything you guys have.
Anybody? Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Barbara Masser. So there's no, number seven, you don't want to speak on? Okay, there's no other speakers?
Mr. Tower?
I move the approval of item case seven with the following exception, eliminate condition number three and replace it with the following language, "No events with more than the permitted number of people who may stay overnight, the number of bedrooms times three shall be held at the short-term rental unit or the property on which it's located. This short-term rental may not request or obtain a special event permit under City Code Section four-dash-one-eight-A."
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Vote is open.
Excuse me, by a vote of eight to three, approve the application of Joshua Lapolt.
Okay, moving on, item, planning item eight, Armando and Patricia Ellis, raise conditional use permit, raise short-term rental at nine oh-one Park Landing Court, District One, Centerville.
Mr., are you Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, good afternoon. How you doing, sir? My property is located in Glenwood. It's, I already did all the remodeling, new roof, the whole nine yards, even did some inside remodeling, so everything is good to go. I follow all the instructions that was required, and I'm just requesting to get passed.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have one other speaker, Barbara Masser. No other speakers, sir.
Okay, Mr. Wood?
So, I, this is the one I had questions on, the parking. Mr. Tahan, so, can you pull it up on there, maybe? So, this last one, I'm not a fan of the garage parking to begin with, but that last car right there bothers me a little bit because it looks like it goes out into the road. Is that accurate?
It goes into the right-of-way, but if we go to the photo that is of the driveway...
Do you have a better one than the photocopied one that we have here?
Yes, sir, we should have it in the, in, there is no sidewalk, and the car will not hang out past the driveway. It won't go...
Goes on with the apron?
It goes onto the apron, yes, sir. So, although it does go over the city right-of-way line, it does not appear to, it does not block a sidewalk or the public right-of-way.
Okay. Okay, any other speakers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Wooten?
I move to approve this item.
Second. Okay, any other discussion?
I would like to just make a brief comment. Just noticing, over the last few weeks, as the short-term rental applications have been coming before us, I find that we're in a delicate balance to preserve neighborhoods and also to follow the letter of the ordinance that we approved. And so, you know, with past discussions that we've had, it's something that we are working our way through with each application, you know, trying to make sure that we follow the ordinance we put in. And so, I would like to thank the staff, because the staff, you know, they work very hard to follow our direction and our lead. And when the ordinance was imposed and approved, you know, they've been doing the best, their best at addressing, you know, those concerns. Will every short-term rental be appropriate for every neighborhood? Probably not. But the only way we're going to find out is as we go forward on a case-by-case basis. There are things that we'll have to tweak, there are things that we'll have to change, but we're all going to do this together. And so I'd like to thank our staff, and also I would like to thank the community as well, because we appreciate, you know, you coming down to speak, and you're concerned about your neighborhood, and we hear what you're saying, and, but we will work through this together. So, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wood?
So, if I could ask, Ms. Wooten, would you consider modifying condition number two to same language as Mr. Tower regarding the occupancy?
Yes.
That would be consistent.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Moss?
I only ask that that condition be read into the record, only so that the record of the motion is the legal thing, what we've done, and so that could be read into the record. That would be appreciated.
If I may read it?
Yes, please, thank you, guy.
"No events with more than the permitted number of people who may stay overnight, number of bedrooms times three shall be held at the short-term rental unit or the property on which it's located. This short-term rental may not request or obtain a special event permit under City Code Section four-dash-one-eight-A."
And that replaces condition number two, I believe.
This is item...
Yes, condition two.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moss, thank you, Mr. Tower. Thank you, Ms. Wooten.
Thank you.
Vote is open?
By a vote of eight to three, you have approved the application, Armando and Patricia Ellis.
Okay, moving on to item number nine under planning, John Bradley Gribble, raise conditional use permit, short-term rental.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
I don't have him.
Okay, welcome, sir.
Good evening. Long-term, longtime Virginia Beach resident, grew up here, went to high school, lived here for ten years at this residence, had to move with my wife and kid up to Maryland for work, so we rented it traditionally for a while, it didn't work out quite as well. Worked with our neighbors and neighborhood and have been renting it for about five months now. It's not a gold mine, we're barely paying the mortgage on it, but we've had great tenants and really no problem, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay.
Barbara Masser?
Didn't realize the Centerville one, that was Ms. Wooten's district, it used to be Mr. Dyer's, and I do want to thank Ms. Wooten for, she's one of the few people that actually answers my emails. I don't have access to anyone's Facebook pages, because I bring up a lot of questions, I'm very involved. So I just want to tell you I appreciate, you know, your reply today, and you're, I know you're doing the best you can, so thank you. And, you know, it seems like everything, everyone's kind of in lockstep on these votes. Last time it was eleven to zero, when I looked at the summary, it's like, it's really hard for somebody here to go against, and that was eight-three vote on that last one. But, you know, Ninth Street, that's a really busy area, there's a lot of condos and a lot of traffic. I think the Back Bay Brewery, they used the parking that y'all created there so people could bike, you know, there's just so little access for people to get to the beach and get around. And then everything's, you know, turning into short-term rental, so, you know, I'd just like to know if Mr. Tower, there's like sixteen, did you have time to look at all of these and see how much parking was there and, you know, do any proactive things to see how the neighbors felt? Because everyone doesn't come to council, everyone doesn't even know what's on the agenda. It's not even in the newspaper anymore. So, a lot of, and there's just too many things going on. So, yeah, I, it's just way too many. When is it going to end? Is there going to be any neighborhoods left in the city? Mr. Moss, you can have your opinions on whether or not people have conflicts, and I will have mine, but I know, I read VPAP, and I know who donates to who, and I know who does have conflicts, whether they want to admit them or abstain, I know, and other people know. Thank you.
That's all the speakers. Would you like to come up and rebuttal?
Yes. Yes, sir.
I live on Ninth Street, and where the house is, it's a dead-end street, there is no traffic, and Mr. Tower's actually working with our residents there to make it permitted parking on the street, because our street is not zoned permitted, so he's done a great job and helped us out there.
Okay, thank you. Hey, at this point, Mr. Tower?
I just would ask, Mr. Tahan, would you very quickly tell, for the benefit of people looking and listening in, tell us what's done to advertise each of these in the neighborhood in terms of communications with the neighbors?
Yes, sir. The items required to be posted with a sign out front that calls that there is a public hearing for, one, the Planning Commission, also the City Council hearing. We also mail immediately adjacent property owners and property owners across the street. Along with that, there's advertisements that run two weeks in a row prior to the Planning Commission and the City Council hearing, stating that these items will... Commission and the City Council hearing, stating that these items will be heard.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tower?
I move the approval of this application, and this is item, I'm trying to keep pace here, number nine, with the exception of a condition two, which I would eliminate in favor of the following: no events with more than the permitted number of people who may stay overnight. Number of bedrooms times three shall be held at the short-term rental unit or the property on which it's located. This short-term rental may not request or obtain a special event permit under City Code Section 4-18A.
Okay. Okay, wait, second? Second. Okay, the vote is open.
By a vote of eight to three, you have approved the application of John Bradley Gribble.
Okay, next up, item under planning ten, Willene Simmons, conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental at one eight oh four B Baltic Avenue, District Six Beach.
The first speaker is Ms. Simmons, the next.
Welcome.
Barbara Messner.
Thank you so very much, this is Willene Simmons, thank you, thank you to the mayor, vice mayor, to the council and staff, I appreciate you all for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to speak on behalf of my property, and it also goes as well to, to speaking on behalf of some of the others as well, they're, they're here. But first, I'm a new resident to Virginia Beach, and I'm tickled pink to be here, I love the city, I love being here, and I'm a homeowner, homeowner, and I just want to say, therefore, I am vested and very concerned about my neighborhood and about the home itself. I just wanted to make sure, you know, as well, I, I work for Dell Corporation, but I do work from home, and I've been working from home for years and decades, so I, it is important for me to, you know, to be at home and to have that, but the purpose of renting out or under the conditional use permit is just when I travel and I'm away from work. So, I am a homeowner and I am vested. And, wanted to say that I did meet with the zoning and the groups that we were required to meet with, and turning in applications, and that my application has complied with all of the requirements that have been set forth, I have letters of support from my other neighbors, and one thing to note about the location itself is that it is within a mixed-use area, it's commercial and residential, right in front is the funeral home, right behind is a brewery, and the lot next to us on the other end is also for mixed-use, so it's not just residential. So, the other thing I have, is I do have strict guidelines in place for, in agreements with any guests that have stayed there, that require quiet time to ensure that there are no disturbances to others, and so I, I now consider it a super host as well with, with Airbnb, and I have very favorable reviews, and I'd like to, you know, continue in that manners, and that's, that's my overall goal. So, I respectfully request your vote of approval, and I thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you.
Barbara Messner. And after Ms. Messner is Kathy Ronkel.
Mr. Tower, when I ask you about the agendas, I was talking about City Council, it goes before planning first, and the last planning meeting I went to was last March, it was four and a half hours, started at twelve o'clock. That's quite an eye-opener. Not many people can go, and, and those planning meetings, they start at nine AM, and then, then they, the planning people that y'all appoint, they show up here. So, and this applicant, you know, why doesn't anyone consider year-round rentals? Do you have any idea how hard it is to find affordable housing and for somebody to live at the oceanfront? Now, everything is short-term rental. She talked about it being mixed-use area and a brewery, the breweries are, they have special designation, they don't have to have a restaurant license and sell food, food trucks take up parking, and they're manufacturing and distribution centers. So, it's, it's just, the resort area is encroaching into the neighborhood, it's the vibe district. I was shocked to see the, the type of flag used on the second precinct, not the American flag, not the Confederate flag, but a specific flag on the back, and, you know, I mean, everything is painted, it bridges, everything is painted, it's just, I think it's tacky and we have uncontrolled growth. Like I said, if people just wanted to rent year-round like they used to do, they wouldn't even need a conditional use permit. So, like I said, planning, planning has a big job to do, and I don't think things should be coming before you until everyone is fully informed, and I think everything should be, I think we should be able to see the full agenda at least a week in advance, not the day before. Like I said, it's six hundred and seventy pages, I believe, thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Ronkel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for your time, I really want to probably start by apologizing, apologizing to Ms. Simmons, I'm not speaking on her specific property, but as I've heard comments tonight, and I heard the number of rentals that are out there and the number that are in the pipeline, I, you know, obviously just picked a number to come up here to be able to just speak a couple of things that are on my mind. So, I live at three sixteen twenty-sixth Street, right in the midst of the VB Homes houses that were out here. Interestingly enough, I have a seasonal rental that is right next door to me. I actually bought that property about five or six years ago, when it became for sale, not from VB Homes, but from the previous owner, because I wanted to control who my neighbors were, because our houses are so close together, I thought if someone moves in with a barking dog or a bunch of crazy kids and doesn't keep up their property, my life at the beach that I know is now over. So, I literally bought the property next door because I wanted to control who my neighbors were. I don't really want to be renting properties, but that was sort of my choice of ensuring who my neighbors were. So, the interesting thing is that the gentleman that owned the house, the rental house before me, he did the seasonal rental the year before I bought it, and I can tell you, as a homeowner, I was not one bit happy about it, like I was, there wasn't anything I could do, you know, this was six years ago. Interesting thing was, as he rented it out all summer long, and the people were coming and going every week, traipsing back and forth in front of my property, I wasn't, but I found I completely enjoyed having those people there, staying there on vacation, life was good, they only rented to families, we had great people in there. So, you know, I know as, as some of the speakers spoke in favor of VB Homes, they have enjoyed having the seasonal rentals and people there. On the flip side, you know, we have very high-end, brand-new homes that are seasonal rentals, and so the rent is high, it attracts a certain level and quality of people, I know VB Homes, I think some of its property managers were here, they do a great job of managing those properties, therefore, right in our little area, we don't have any issues. My concern is, as I hear, there's sixteen hundred grandfathered in, I'm one that's grandfathered in, there's hundreds in the pipeline, if you go out there to HomeAway or VRBO, there's over two thousand in Virginia Beach listed today, there has been two thousand properties listed for a long time. My concern is that we're gonna lose the neighborhood, I don't want my whole street to be seasonal rentals, and I think our biggest problem, I think Mr. Moss brought it up, is you don't have data. You don't have data to know how many houses in this block are seasonal rentals, like I don't think every house on the block, I don't know what the number is, my concern is that these are gonna be rubber stamped through, because you're stamping this bunch through, so why wouldn't you stamp the next bunch through and the next bunch through?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers.
Okay. Mr. Tower?
I move the approval of item ten, with the substitution of condition number eight for the following: no events with more than the permitted number of people who may stay overnight. Number of bedrooms times three shall be held at the short-term rental unit or the property on which it's located. This short-term rental may not request or obtain a special event permit under City Code Section 4-18A.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any comment? Vote's open.
By a vote of eight to three, we approve the application of Willene Simmons.
Okay, moving on to item eleven under planning, Saoud Belmandani for conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental at eighteen oh four C Baltic Avenue, District Six.
Are you applicant? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to me and looking at my applications.
Could you speak up a little bit?
Yeah, my voice, I teach too, so my, they always, I have always this concern, I'm a soft voice, so I try to do my best. Yeah, thank you so much for taking the time to look at my application. So, I live here since two thousand thirteen, the Baltic Avenue residence is our vacation home, so we spend some time over there, and we rent it, so depend. So, so far, I started on July, I had my guest, our family, I had cancer survivor who came and spent good time, I had deployment party, I had, I mean, party gathering together, I had graduation, all, so far, all my guests were very respectful, they respect the rules, my rules are clear, no party, we don't allow party, nothing, the parking is in my driveway, they don't, I don't provide them with the parking in the city or anything, so, so far, I respect all the rules that were designed by Virginia Beach. I don't know if you have any question, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Messner? No speakers then, sir, no other speakers.
Mr. Tower?
I move the approval of item eleven with the substitution for condition eight with the following language: no events with more than the permitted number of people who may stay overnight. Number of bedrooms times three shall be held at the short-term rental unit or the property on which it's located. This short-term rental may not request or obtain a special event permit under City Code Section 4-18A.
Any second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Vote is open.
By a vote of eight to three, you have approved the application of Saoud Belamdi.
Okay, item twelve under planning, Elizabeth Ann Gregory for conditional use permit, Ray short-term rental at six thirty-five South Atlantic Avenue, District Six Beach.
Is the applicant here, Elizabeth Ann Gregory? Elizabeth Ann Gregory? So, we have Barbara Messner signed up as well.
Ms. Messner?
Like I said, I'm, I'm here to oppose these, there, there were too many last time, it took up way too much of the meeting, a lot of people don't come because they know they have to wait through all of this, and. Mr. Tower, you're making a lot of changes, I think if there's gonna be changes made, they should be deferred, and, you know, people have a chance to know what's going on, I just, like I said, you know, it's just way too many things, and it's unbelievable that you know there's a backlog of things that are grandfathered in, I don't think they should be grandfathered in, and you're just destroying the quality of life, there's, there's flooding, there's parking, a lot of these properties, like, Mr. Wood, I think you have property, there was a town bank loan, not just before Sessom stepped down, and you have some property on Twenty-first or Twenty-second Street, so all this vibe district, the sports center that's gonna open, it's just gonna be year-round commercialism, and I think you're destroying the city, thank you.
That's all the speakers.
Mr. Tower?
Mayor, I think I'll move to defer this item, since applicant's not here, I opened a suggestion about to what date.
I would say an indefinite deferral, because you've got opposition to this, I mean, there, this is one, if you look in this package, it's, only has opposition to it, and I've got some questions about the way it's laid out, so I think, I think, I think it needs to be indefinitely deferred and let the applicant bring it back.
Okay, Aaron and then Louis.
I was just wondering, can we, number, it's a question for a city attorney, can we see if, if any of the applicants are here tonight? If not, do we want to continue to go through this, if you're gonna defer it based on applicants not being present?
I'm sorry, I didn't follow.
I think what he's asking is, can we determine in a summary fashion if there are other applicants who are not here for their application, and we can speed the process along? I think that's Mr. Rouse's theory.
Madam Clark, are there? I don't have a, the applicant on number fourteen, Tara Ryan, okay, so if they're here, they just didn't sign up with me. Number sixteen, Lawrence.
Right.
Seventeen, they're here as well, they just didn't sign up with us, I'm sorry.
All right.
Seems like most of the applicants are still here.
Yeah, you know, it is a process. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Tahan, I went out and looked at all these properties, and I noticed that this particular property did not have a sign. Could you check on that for us, please?
Yes, sir, we'll check on that.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion for deferral indefinitely?
I need a second.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear if there was one.
Okay. All right, any discussion? Thank you.
What's the, what's the motion?
Indefinite deferral. Okay.
Ms. Wilson, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of eleven to zero, you've indefinitely deferred item number twelve, Elizabeth Ann Gregory.
Okay, item thirteen, Coastal Accommodations LLC, Christopher Holbert, Ray conditional use permit for short-term rental, six three six one six, six three six Sixteenth Street, Beach District.
Caroline Harrison.
Welcome.
Good evening, my name's Caroline Harrison, I'm here on behalf of the property owner, Chris Holbert, I'm the owner of Coastal Accommodations, we are the property manager for this property. Our company offers privately-owned vacation homes to visitors coupled with concierge services for the ultimate Virginia Beach experience. Let's see, you guys know, can see where it is, I was gonna explain, but being in the heart of the vibe district, this has been a really popular home, we manage just under thirty properties, and this is one of our most popular, just being down from the vibe district and the convention center. We have lots of families coming for sports, travel. We specialize in short-term rentals, and we learn to use a qualifying process for renters that includes discussions with the guests, first allowing us to be very successful in weeding out negligent renters. Clear, consistent, and abundant communication has been the key to the neighbors and neighborhood become, be, remaining really happy with our short-term rentals. The evolving customer booking behavior and travel preferences made this home the ideal addition to Virginia Beach's accommodation portfolio. The house not only contributes but enhances the choices and experiences for those traveling to the beach. Any question?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Barbara Messner?
Thirty properties, this is an investment, people are just buying up properties all over the beach. It used to be a neighborhood, when I lived on Twenty-fourth Street, it was before Will Sessom's cousin built those, those condos across the street, it was, it was homes, there were people living there year-round, and we had, tourism wasn't year-round, and the vibe district, that's taxpayer subsidized, city and state, you've expanded the entire oceanfront all the way to Birdneck Road. So, you know, you're all gonna do what you want, but I just think you're ruining, you're ruining the neighborhood and you're turning it into just a commercial venue. I think it's horrible.
Thank you.
All the speakers.
Okay, Mr. Tower?
I move the approval of item thirteen, with the exception of replacing condition four with the following language, condition number four: no events with more than the permitted number of people. number of people who may stay overnight, number of bedrooms times three shall be held at the short-term rental unit or the property on which it's located. This short-term rental may not request or obtain a special event permit under City Code Section 4-18A.
Okay, second? Okay, we have a second? Any discussion? Vote is open.
By a vote of eight to three, you have approved the application Coastal Accommodations LLC and Christopher Holbert.
Okay, under planning, item 14, Tara Ryan for conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 933 Pacific Avenue, Unit B, District 6, Beach.
Are you the applicant?
I'm the owner.
You'll just state your name for the record, please.
Ryan. I'd like to take a motion for a coffee break. I really wanted to thank the council, specifically Mr. Rouse, you know, mayor, vice mayor, for your get it done attitude, and Mrs. Henley too, for protecting the neighborhoods. I appreciate that. We've owned and operated two Airbnbs for roughly two years, one's grandfathered in. There's a lot of investors moving into that specific area because it's a hotel converted over to condos. It's been operated mainly as short-term rentals for about 40 years because it was converted in the 1980s by Jim Lutz. We only get one parking spot with our two-bedroom, but as our plan, what we've done is gotten a Ninth Street Parking Garage Permit, which is parallel to the area. And in addition to that, we had an agreement with the Travelodge parking lot behind it that we could, you know, have an extra parking spot if we needed to for $10 a night. And in addition to that, Jim Lutz had said that there's off-site parking. He's the HOA manager that does short-term rentals as well, that thinks over by the convention center if we needed it. So I think we've got a, a solid parking plan in place. In addition to that, we own another spot if we needed it, and my brother owns a spot too. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, Josh, I have a question.
I have a question for staff. Is, is there the ability for them to take out a contract for longer than month-to-month for the parking spot that we know of?
I believe there is, I just don't know the term that's available, so I'll have to look into that.
We did meet with, my wife met with the manager and she said it wouldn't be a problem for month-to-month, it would just run concurrently.
No, I mean, could we, could you, could you buy it for like a year or more?
Year in advance? No, I think they only do month-to-month. I asked that too because I wanted to try and get a discount for it, but unfortunately no.
Yeah, Mr. Moss.
I want to go back to the parking thing, and I know that's probably a line of questioning that I would suspect that...
Oh.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I didn't want to give one example. We did have, we advertise our place as only one spot available for the two-bedroom, and we had one applicant or one person that stayed that needed an additional spot, and that's actually what we did. We did, actually sent that in as a, an example of a real, example that it happened.
If I could continue my line of questioning with this, with this city attorney. The ordinance actually says you have to have two parking spaces per bedroom independent of your intentions or your practice. So my, my question is, since the conditional use permit is for five years, and that's a condition of the conditional use permit, would not the applicant have to have a codified, legally binding right for parking for the full five-year period in order to meet the requirements of the ordinance?
That is up to council's discretion. Your ordinance says that you should, that, that the, that all, all STRs, including grandfathered and CUPs, should have adequate parking, and it defines adequate parking as, as a minimum of one space per bedroom. It also says that you can modify any condition as you see fit in the conditional use permit. So, I believe council has discretion as to what to do on that issue.
I would suggest to my colleagues that we not start establishing the precedent from waiving the requirement that the parking secured for the bedrooms be the same duration as a conditional use permit. Thank you.
Yes, Rose Mary.
Could the applicant, I'm sorry, come back. So, a lot of condo docs don't allow short-term rentals at all.
Oh, ours is written in.
And you have been doing short-term rentals since...
For two years.
How long?
Two years.
Well, how long has the...
Oh, when the, when it was converted over, that's written in. It's specifically for short-term rentals, which is over 40 years. It was none in the 80s, so it's almost like a Sandbridge-esque short-term rental.
So y'all have been doing short-term rentals for 40 years?
In the condo, yeah, in the association, absolutely.
With the association.
Right. Yeah, that's what it was intended for when they originally converted everything over.
And now, because, and it's not just you, but all, everybody else...
Right.
...that purchased this thinking they were going to be able to rent this, and they've been doing it for years, now all of a sudden, is that right, being taken away?
Yeah, well, I had actually reached out to see if there's a way to grandfather our building, and specifically, I think that the council had it right when they had to overlay districts originally, you know, because that would have fallen into the districts of the overlays themselves. I mean, I might be wrong, I usually am, that's what my wife tells me, but I think our specific area, our building is, you know, was originally set up for short-term rentals, so...
Well, y'all have been doing it for, well, we're having an issue down at the sanctuary in Sandbridge. That was built to do weekly rentals, and people bought them for that reason, even though Sandbridge is in the overlay district to do it, there are three and four-bedroom units there, and they're, they're being denied, and they've been doing them for, for years, but now they're being denied because they don't have three or four parking spots, so...
Right.
This is kind of along that same issue.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Tower.
I just want to, Sir Ryan, you understand that you have to maintain throughout the whole time that you use this, a second parking space?
Oh, yes, sir.
Whether you're contractually obligated for the full length of the five, that during that entire period, you have to maintain a, a second space?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Henley.
I thought I heard you at the very beginning say that you had two.
Right.
One of them is grandfathered and one is not. I don't understand why one would not be...
Oh, well, one's only in one bedroom, one-bedroom condo.
Oh, it was only one, so you did need the one parking space.
But it was before the legislation had went through. We bought it, we'd actually stayed in Airbnb in Georgia and like, wow, what a great idea, and then we enjoyed it, so we decided to try...
So you have been doing short-term rentals and paying the taxes, and the only reason you were not grandfathered was because...
Because of the timing when we bought the second one.
Oh, the timing and...
Right. We bought the second one because it was such a, a good idea from the first one. And actually rehabbing both, there's been a lot of investors going in and rehabbing that specific association.
Mr. Moss.
I always have questions about executability of conditions when we decide to, for whatever reason, not hold people to the same standard across the board in terms of codified, legally binding parking spaces, but a lot of informal ad hoc relationships. So I'm trying to figure out how the planning department plans going about getting monthly certifications or monthly notifications, and so what is the mechanism by which we're going to be able to hold ourselves accountable to the public and to the other people who the council has granted these particular parking and imposed these requirements on other short-term rentals that in fact the condition is being met, which puts a policing function on you?
Yes, sir. Councilman Moss, the, the goal is to have yearly inspections from zoning, as we normally would do for all of our conditional use permits. We try to go through and, and check on all of them, and that would be part of it. We would ask, ask them if they have that available to them.
But if they're doing parking on a month-to-month basis, they could be out of, they could be in compliance on the 12th month and the first month and no months in between, so I'm asking if that is the basis upon which this particular motion allows, you now have a monthly validation requirement, not a yearly validation requirement, and how does your part, how does your department plan to enforce that?
Parking is under the SGA office at this moment, so we, if need be, we can get a report noting if they have the parking space the least.
I'm not saying if need be, we need to be sure they're compliant, or you're going to have a positive compliance mechanism by which you are notified by the parking agency that the positive communication, you know, not by exception, that in fact the requirement is being met, because every other short-term rental person is having to meet that on their property, so we know that's there. This, it's like someone buying insurance and then they cancel their insurance after they get something that needed insurance for. Well, how are you, you should be getting positive monthly affirmation that parking is available. How do you plan to do that?
We'd be glad to email it in when we do our taxes, and to answer your question, Mrs. Henley, we actually have all the tax stamps that we've been paying for over two years now.
Because this won't be the only case we see with this? So I think we need to understand how that, I don't want to go to the applicant, I want to come to your department and be able to say to the public that we are holding these people accountable in a positive fashion and not relying upon voluntary compliance.
Yes, sir, understand.
Perhaps that can be a part of Mr. Tower's...
Yeah.
...motion when he does the other part too, that, that he will monthly certify when he pays his taxes.
Sorry. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have another speaker, Barbara Messner.
Parking is a huge issue at the beach. When Mayor Sussman was here, down at Rudy Inlet, he had parking for seniors, reduced parking. Now that's bus parking, tour bus parking, I think, I forget what they charge. Parking is a nightmare, and, you know, all the talk on the arena deal, one of the big problems, several of us were fighting that for five years, including Mr. Minz that I mentioned earlier. Yeah, an entire square mile of woods has been removed, and that's parking, you're planning more parking garages. The 2018 budget that y'all came up with that I wasn't happy with, 2018, it's for $190 million CIP. The city's paying for, you know, all these projects at the oceanfront, the sports center. That is one hideous place. I just took pictures yesterday after going to the gun show this weekend. I see there's, there's people here on that issue. But the Ninth Street Parking Garage, when you, when you were talking about the arena, okay, I'm glad everybody thinks it's funny, I don't think it's funny. I'm not here to be funny and entertaining. I'm here because you all aren't doing your jobs and you don't care about anything except profit and staying in office. When you worked on the, and Mr. Moss, you and Sussman both said not one penny, not one dime of taxpayer dollars would be going to the arena project. That was not true, because it, the debt goes, you gave the property to the Economic Development Authority. But the parking is a huge issue. It's been an issue since the early 90s. We used to have, you know, it was, you could park at the oceanfront free after 5 o'clock. You know, you can't, you can't do that anymore, and the overflow for the convention center is going to Ninth Street and 31st Street? There's no parking there? The hotel owners should have had a satellite parking, and I still think the hotel and retail should have satellite parking and they should pay for it. We shouldn't be paying for parking for anybody.
That's all the speakers.
Okay, Mr. Tower, and do you have a possible comment or solution on the parking dilemma?
Well, I'll, I'll let, I'll let Ms. Henley move to amend my motion perhaps, if she, she cares to do so. But I'm going to, I'm going to make the same motion I made previously.
I'm not going to vote for it.
Yet out, Mr. Rouse?
I would say, I don't know what motion you want to make, but the applicant himself, you know, he's seen his, all his paperwork, all his taxes he does every year, every month, and he said, I understand we may want to put something in to make sure he, he does it, but on that condition, I think, you know, I don't have an issue with him doing month-to-month certification on parking.
So, you know, I'll tell you, if we can, if you can make your, you know, standard motion and then we can ask Ms. Henley for her, you know, very sage and good verbiage.
Well, I was just going to suggest that the, that item, and I'm not sure which of the items it is, just clarify that the second parking space will be verified monthly at the time of tax payment.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll take that as a friendly amendment.
I think it's, yes.
Include it in my motion.
It's item two.
Okay.
All right.
Do we have, is that clear?
In the interest of time, yeah, I'll, I'll go on and include Ms. Henley's suggestion in my motion. I move the adoption, the approval of item 14 with the following exception that, I'm sorry, are we on 14? Yes, 14. With the exception that condition number four be replaced by the following language, no events with more than the permitted number of people who may stay overnight, number of bedrooms times three shall be held at the short-term rental unit or the property on which it's located. This short-term rental may not request or obtain a special event permit under City Code Section 41A. And for the second part of this motion, I would ask that the following additional condition be imposed, that the, that the applicant be required to submit monthly verifications of an additional parking space available for the occupants of the subject unit.
Do we have a second? Second. Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of 10 to 1, you approve the application of Tara Ryan.
Okay, moving on to item 15, Michael Matthews for conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 425 Lakewood Circle, District 6, Beach.
Mr. Matthews?
Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Michael Matthews. My wife Sandy and I are new to the short-term rentals. We only have one 425 Lakewood Circle, which is my house that I've owned for over 10 years before Sandy and I got married last year. We are both retired, we entered into the Airbnb for my house from April through September 2019, and we have worked very hard and are very personally hands-on for whatever we have to do for our neighbors, the neighborhood, as well as our guests. We have paid our taxes to the city and stayed on time and have always done the right thing. We also live in the house when we have no bookings. I know and are on good terms with all my neighbors and have countless support from them. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, sir, if I may.
Yes, please.
Did you say you live in the house?
Just when we don't have bookings, that we do, and, let's see, we, we just stay like on that, like if we don't have a booking for like two or three days and we, we cleaned it and all that, we might stay overnight. That's basically what I meant. We're not living there, no.
You don't live there, are you?
No.
Okay.
And my wife, excuse me, my wife may want to say some words too.
I have her card. The next speaker is Sandy Vekas.
Welcome.
My name is Sandy Vekas. I live at 925 Balio Drive. My husband and I are applying for a conditional use permit. I have lived in Virginia Beach all of my life and I have seen a lot of change. I believe that what is happening here now is part of that change. But I would like to tell you a bit about ourselves as hosts. Before granting a guest request to book, guests must read and agree to our house rules, house rules that include, among other things, observance of quiet time at 10:00 PM. We also communicate with our guests before we allow them to book. We ask them to tell us about themselves, their work, full name and address. We ask that they upload their verifications through Airbnb. We read prior reviews. We have enjoyed and appreciated the many people we have hosted over the last year. We are super hosts, we attained super host status very quickly because we are dedicated to doing our best to make our Airbnb right for ourselves, our neighbors, and our guests. We have the support of our neighbors. We have submitted a list of signatures from the people in our neighborhood. Three letters have been written in our support by our neighbors, including the neighbors who live right next door to us. We have found that our Airbnb house is better maintained and cared for. As renters, we generally had no access to our house. Only after the lease is up can we go in and fix things up and clean up. We are there every... clean up. We are there every week now cleaning and fixing. We are hands-on. Our Airbnb is not managed by a management company. It is very personal to us and something we enjoy doing. We meet the guests that we welcome to our home. And lastly, we need the income that we get from our Airbnb as we are retired. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Barbara Messner?
Okay.
Any other speakers?
All right, Mr. Tower.
I move the approval of item 15 with the following exception, that condition number four be replaced with the following language, no events with more than the permitted number of people who may stay overnight, number of bedrooms times three shall be held at the short-term rental unit or on the property on which it's located. This short-term rental may not request or obtain a special event permit under City Code Section 4-18A.
Okay, second? Second. Okay, Mr. Moss and Ms. Abbott.
I just want to review, how long did she say she's been conducting short-term rentals on this property?
One year.
Since what date?
From April until September 2019.
So from April of 2019?
I don't do it.
Okay, that's why she's not grandfathered.
Exactly.
Okay, just trying to make sure I didn't, couldn't remember what she said.
Jessica.
I have a question for staff. When we, when we review these applications, are you all going through and looking at the active listings on Airbnb and HomeAway and all the variety of places they can list?
Not at this time. The reason being is because the listings that show up there don't go address-specific, so we'd have to have someone dedicated to searching. There is a potential for obtaining a third party that does that as well and provides a list, which would be similar to what the city treasurer has, but we do not, or the assessor has, so.
The part of the homework I've been doing on all of these applications is to do my best to try to find them because the app is also not as intuitive. But I have run across a few, and I'm not trying to pick on you all. But when they advertise more guests than they're permitted by the ordinance, what is our process for handling that?
It would be similar to what would hap, what has happened recently, where there were other applications that came forward and the applicant was notified that they can't have that many. We would contact them and let them know they need to change their posting. We do have to be proactive, though, so if that is, that is a very time-intensive thing, then I will try our best to do.
Okay, Mr. Moss?
There's a lot of intelligent software out there that, there's some that even monitor the prices of a billion things around the planet. So I can't, I have to believe that there's someone out there that has seen that this is a market and has an intelligent agent that can go out and do that. So I would ask the staff to, just to kind of research the industry, to see if there isn't that kind of a software that just runs across the system and looks for things.
It does exist, sir. I believe the treasurer has the same software. It's just we're not a party of that contract that they have with them. So we would need to expand and...
We just need to understand what that costs and why we can't share information or an agent, because I think we should just let the system tell us. And that would be a great way to get audit compliance or make sure that we're not, people aren't misrepresenting their, their property.
Okay, yes, sir.
That would be great. I'd like, that budget's coming up, so great time to discuss it.
Thank you. Okay. Ready? Moving on.
We need to vote.
A motion, forgive me, long day.
I think there's a motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor, okay? Vote open.
By a vote of eight to three, approve the application of Michael Matthews.
Okay, item 16, under Planning, Lawrence W. Clever and Bruce Pencil, Oceanfront Escape LLC, for conditional short-term rental at 4005 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 203.
Sir, if you'll state your name for the record, please.
Yes, Lawrence W. Clever, Jr.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a unit at Oceans Two, whom those of you who have lived here for a long time will know was originally built as the Aeolus Hotel in 1959. And when the Oceans One condominium tower was built, those developers bought the Aeolus Hotel from the original owner proprietors. The units are all studios in a range of 325 to 350 square feet. So they are effectively one room plus a bathroom and an abbreviated kitchen and a covered balcony. Ours is of that type. And what goes along with ownership at Oceans Two is a designated parking space. And as such, we bought the unit. We use it occasionally and we rent it on a short-term basis. And that is the approval and the conditional use permit approval for which we're asking. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for the applicant? Rosemary Lynn G.
So Oceans Two has traditionally been short-term rentals for years and years and years.
Yes, it always has.
But you have just gotten into the program, that's why you're here and you're not grandfathered in?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Tower.
Mr. Clouseau, I saw a letter of objection from someone in the Oceans condominium. It appeared that they were confused about where this unit was. They were talking about the condo restrictions prohibiting short-term rentals. I assume the person that was complaining was confused that they thought it was in their building and not in your building. Is that correct?
I can only tell you that we received unanimous approval from the Board of Directors of the Condominium Association for our application. And I can also tell you that we received seven letters from the seven surrounding unit owners.
All this in Oceans Two?
Yes, in Oceans Two.
I'm speaking, did you see the letter from someone in?
I did not, I did not, no, sir.
They apparently were complaining, and I think they were just confused. They thought it was, they got bad information that it was in their building. Because they were saying there was, that short-term rentals were not prohibited, were not permitted.
I didn't.
Obviously, they're permitted in your building.
To the best of our knowledge.
All right, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Tower.
I move the approval...
I'm sorry, we have another speaker.
Oh, another speaker.
Yes, Barbara Messner.
I believe Oceans Two is the studios on the oceanfront. That's right where the Marriott just went up and the Ambassador Hotel, they're going up. I mean, traffic there is horrible. Y'all just changed the road for the Cavalier. But the main reason I'm speaking at this time, because I was gonna wait through some of these, and I appreciate Mr. Rouse wanting to get through this, but I hope you will try to look into what the agendas are and see if there's some way you can limit what is put on one agenda, because it's hard on everyone. And, you know, for me, I know a lot about the beach, but you're brand new. So, you know, this is, this is a lot. But we have over 9,000 city employees. And the planning department and zoning is a pretty big, pretty big operation. So, you know, if they're not able to do this, to have a third party do some of the work with all the expenses we have and all the salaries, I just think that we need to slow things down because it shouldn't be outsourced. So that's the main reason I spoke. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers.
Ready, Ms. Henley?
Could I ask the applicant again, because in looking at these letters?
Sir, can you come forward?
We got, yes. It does seem to be that they were referring to a different address. You're at 400...
We're at 4005, Number 203.
Okay, and this one indicated 4004. So apparently, a couple of these are, that were in objection from the others. Now, tell me again how big this is. You said 305?
The, they're all studio units. The original 37 units, which were built in 1959, are in the vicinity of 320 to 330 square feet of conditioned space plus a five-foot-deep covered outdoor balcony. There were six additional units built in 1970 when the building was converted to condominiums. Those six units are in two stacks of three at either end, the north and south end of the oceanfront leg of the building. Those units are a bit bigger, but ours is not one of those. Those units are approximately 425 square feet, I believe.
Well, how many people are you accommodating?
We frankly advertise for two people only. When we made our application, zoning indicated to us that with one bedroom, which is what we have, you were allowed as many as three. But quite frankly, we have dissuaded people who want to put any more than two people into the unit. And I will tell you that we have only ever received two applications of that sort, one of which was an infant, and the other was a child of eight years old.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Ready for a motion?
Yes.
I move the approval of item 16 with the substitution for condition number four of the following language, no events with more than the permitted number of people who may stay overnight, number of bedrooms times three shall be held at the short-term rental unit or the property on which it's located. This short-term rental may not request or obtain a special event permit under City Code Section 4-18A.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, vote's open.
By a vote of 10 to 1, you've approved the application of Lawrence Clever.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Okay, pushing onward, Number 17, Planning Item Linda Ergo for conditional use permit, Ray Short-Term Rental, 4005 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 107.
If you'll state your name for the record, please, ma'am.
Welcome.
Hi, hi, everyone. Linda Ergo, speaking for this, a similar unit to what you just heard, in the complex that was originally built as a motel, short-term rentals, and then was converted to condo. We've rented it since April for one season with having consulted with planning and zoning ahead of time, knowing that this ordinance was coming in. And we meet, and we comply with everything that was requested. In the package are eight letters from surrounding owners. All of the adjoining people, topsides, are included in those letters. We had the same experience as many people have. We had a couple from Canada that came down, and they're gonna come back. They loved it. We had a young couple who got engaged there, you know, things like that. We just have not had mass quantities of people or people who wanted to party. It's not conducive to that, it really isn't. And we have a lot of people on the premises that are there and keeping an eye as well as us, so we just would request that you approve our application.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Next speaker is Barbara Messner.
Okay, Mr. Tower.
I move the approval of item 17 with the exception of substituting for condition number four, the following language, no events with more than the permitted number of people who may stay overnight, number of bedrooms times three shall be held at the short-term rental unit or the property on which it's located. This short-term rental may not request or obtain special event permit under City Code Section 4-18A.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? The vote is open.
By a vote of 10 to 1, you've approved the application of Linda Ergo.
Okay, next up, Planning 18, Robert L. Stevenson, Jr., Ryan Dunlop, Ray, conditional use permit, Ray Short-Term Rental at 940 Indian Circle, District 6 Beach.
Sir, if you'll state your name for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Robert L. Stevenson, and I'm representing both 18 and 19. I can speak to both now if you'd like, due to the time of interest, if you, you know, with the chance to rebuttal later.
Yeah, that would be great.
Thank you, sir. I'm obviously here, I wasn't grandfathered because I'm an active, I was an active-duty Navy, retired, a veteran of 24 years, and been in this area for the last 12 years as a resident in Virginia Beach, and my family continues to stay here, getting into the real estate as a second career, if you will, and these two properties that we have are both in the same area. I heard a lot of great discussion here this evening, and I also, I think the other side of the story, in this case, at least in my example, the previous tenants, when we took this property over, it wasn't maintained as well as it should be, nor were the tenants necessarily the best citizens, and unhealthy activities. And I was approached by several of the current residents, neighbors, after we'd taken this over, short-term rentals, very happy about the current short-term rental crowd and the people that are there now, as well as the money that we've invested to update the property, employing local contractors as well, put the money into that. And also had the opportunity to also have a professional cleaning service. Another, a bus driver that lives in the area, she has a cleaning service. She started as a business on her own, and we use her exclusively, putting money in her pocket. So again, growing the community as well with this property, not to mention the business taxes, as well as the additional $2,000-plus dollars that we paid to the local economy here, more than the neighborhood residents in the area that's paying addition to the property taxes. So, very excited to be here today. It's been, like I said, the positive experience with the families, and some of the neighbors, actually, their families have booked the residents to come so they can stay with their friends and their families within the neighborhood there as well. So, and it was kind of interesting, I kept hearing about the short-term rentals as a problem for parties. We haven't had that problem for parties. And the talk about limiting the number of people, as the owner, I'm happy to limit the number of people. We don't allow people more than the number of people they're beginning with, because we don't get paid by head, by person, so it doesn't matter. And the less people means less parties. We don't, that's one of our rules, is no parties, you know, less damage, obviously, and keep a positive image for the community. So, that's not a problem with us. I don't think you need to waste any money on outsourcing that, because as owners, we don't, aren't proponents of that anyway. And then, just as far as the party thing in general, I mentioned the previous sentence, there was constant noise violations by the other neighbors complaining about people coming and going all hours of the night. Obviously, we have restrictions on that with the conditional use permit. And I just happened to Google the public, or not Google, went to the Virginia Beach records website, police records website, there were public record from my block alone, in 2019, there were 10 incidents of police incidents where people were called because of disturbance of the peace. None of them were short-term rental people. So there's just as much problem, if not more, for residents, and the short-term rentals, I think, are getting a bad name here a little bit tonight. But anyway, I appreciate your time and respectfully request approval that we meet all the requirements.
Thank you.
Barbara Messner, but she's indicated...
Sir?
Sir?
Do you live there?
Excuse me?
Do you live in that complex?
No, sir, I do not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Messner, would you like to speak?
You know, this gentleman is probably, you know, cares about his property and takes care of it, but how many really will? And he isn't on the premises, so all this falls on air police, and they're understaffed. And planning seems to be overwhelmed. So who's gonna do all of this? It's just, you're just putting way too much out there. So, I mean, if everyone was responsible, you know, they all say they are, but it seems like everybody is just getting into this as an investment. And just because people that rent year-round don't behave, doesn't mean that everyone who rents year-round doesn't behave. You know, it's up to the landlord to enforce, you know, whatever his rules are. So, I don't know if we're gonna have any available rentals, you know, by the time y'all finish with this. Thank you.
Just for clarification, was that for 18 and 19?
Was that for...
Ms. Messner.
Yes, was that for 18 and 19, Ms. Messner?
Yes, because he spoke on both, and my comments were not made specifically.
All I needed to know, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stiles, can Mr. Tower make a motion for both 18 and 19 with the same condition?
It's to the discretion of the chair, substitute review and body.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I move the approval of items 18 and 19, and both of them with the substitution of condition three in each item to substitute the following language, no events with more than the permitted number of people who may stay overnight, number of bedrooms times three shall be held at the short-term rental unit or the property on which it's located. This short-term rental may not request or obtain a special event permit under City Code Section 4-18A.
Second.
Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of eight to three, approve the application of Robert L. Stevenson, 18 and 19.
Okay, Planning item 20, Troy Perry and Leslie Spasser for conditional use permit, short-term rental at 396 58th Street. short-term rental at 396 58th Street, Lynn, Lynn Haven.
Lisa Marvino.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I apologize in advance for my voice and for the coughing, but I'm a little under the weather. I am here today on behalf of Troy Perry and Leslie Spasser. Leslie Spasser was a former colleague of mine at a prior law firm. She and her husband have owned this house for 13 years. They recently, somewhat unexpectedly, relocated to Atlanta. They had a winter rental in over the winter and they'd like to be able to rent this on a short-term basis over the summer. What I've passed out to you, this is a duplex, as the staff report indicates. And we have a letter of support from the, the folks on the other side of the wall of the duplex who are very supportive of the application, as well as additional neighbors. As you can see, the, the long suburban parked in there, they arguably have enough space in their driveway for four cars, but they do have, and have agreed to the condition that the space inside the garage will be left clear for cars as well. So they really do have plenty of parking. They, as they did over the winter, they'll have Atkinson Realty managing this rental. And I've spoken with the lady at Atkinson and they will be all over this. This will not be advertised for special events. They don't want 50 people in their, in their home. And we're perfectly happy with the condition that Councilman Tower has been adding to the other applications, specifically saying no special events at this location, limiting it to the number, the occupancy per the home itself. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. We do feel with the support of the adjoining owner and the other owner in the area that for some reason, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
I didn't give it to you, I swear.
Oh, it's happening fast.
There are germs on those papers, probably, but it wouldn't have happened that fast.
I was sneezing to you, that's why.
Sorry, it's on coronavirus.
No, I haven't been to China. I promise. But in any event, they comply with all the requirements of the ordinance. Staff has recommended approval, planning commission has recommended approval. And again, we feel the modification of, in their case, condition number three to completely rule out the possibility of special events. The applicants are perfectly fine with that. They do not want that in their home.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Messner?
Okay, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, move approval substituting condition number three with the same language as Mr. Tower, if you want to.
Read it for the record.
Can you kindly read it?
No events with more than the permitted number of people who may stay overnight. Number of bedrooms times three shall be held at the short-term rental unit or the property on which it's located. This short-term rental may not request or obtain a special event permit under City Code Section 4-18A.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, vote's open.
By a vote of eight to three, you've approved the application of Troy Perry and Leslie Spasser.
Okay, item 21, planning Kelly M. Allen for conditional use permit, Ray, short-term rental at 4215 MacArthur Road, District 3, Rose Hall.
Ma'am, if you'll just state your name for the record, please.
I'm Kelly M. Allen.
Welcome.
Thank you. Just like everyone else, my husband and I are, have been managing this short-term rental since this past summer. We've actually, we had one other property before that was a long-term rental. We rented out on year, a yearly basis. And just to repeat some of what you've heard from the other applicants, the reason we're short, we're transitioning to a short-term is because it is easier to maintain the property. It's easier to monitor the guests. It's easier to make sure that we're staying a positive influence in the community. With this rental in particular, we live about five minutes away. I work at the school that's literally right next door. I'm a special education teacher. And, you know, it's, it's really, as far as the regulations go, the noise, the parties, we already require that there are no, there are no parties on the property because like some of the other owners have said, it works against us to allow parties. So we really are pleased to restrict that. We also voluntarily restrict the noise to 9:00 PM rather than 10:00 PM because it is a family area, it's a family neighborhood. And we want to be respectful of our neighbors regardless of what the city ordinances are. We want to go above and beyond that. That's pretty much all I got. You got any questions?
Oh, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Wood?
So this is in Green Run?
Yes, sir.
So is, is this permitted under their homeowners association?
We believe it is, yeah. I mean, from, we've read through, we didn't see any restrictions on it. It isn't a condo, it's a townhouse, so it's under the homeowners with the regular home. And we didn't see any limitations on short-term rentals in that.
We have one other speaker?
Thank you.
Okay. Barbara Messner?
She's, she's deferring. Okay, Mr. Bellucci.
I would move for approval, including the condition that we've been recommending for the prior applications. And upon receiving a second, I'd like to make a few comments, if I may.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Bellucci.
Do we need to read the language for the record?
Please.
Yes, please.
Replacing condition three.
No events with more than the permitted number of people who may stay overnight. Number of bedrooms times three shall be held at the short-term rental unit or the property on which it is located. This short-term rental may not request or obtain a special event permit under City Code Section 4-18A.
Thank you, Mr. Tower. And for the sake of time, I'll try to keep my remarks as brief as I can, but I haven't been able to participate in the formulation of the ordinance that we've been considering these permits through this evening because as most of you know, I'm relatively new on council. And also, the previous applications didn't exactly, weren't in the Rose Hall District and I thought this would be a more appropriate time to convey my point of view. I'm extremely concerned about, and if I could say before I start, Ms. Allen, thank you for being here and thanks for the work you do in our schools. And I'm just taking this opportunity to express some remarks about my view on short-term rentals generally. And so I don't want in any way for you to take the, these as any reflection on your application specifically. But I am concerned about the policy that has been adopted by council and that's now being implemented regarding short-term rentals. It's not only about parties, as has been mentioned many times, but it's also, for me and from what I hear from many people, it's also about the character of our neighborhoods. I had the great fortune of growing up in Virginia Beach. I had the great fortune of having neighbors through most of my life when I was growing up that we knew. We grew up with lots of kids in the neighborhood, families lived in the neighborhood. And our lives were enriched as a result. And I compare the, I compare the ordinance that we're implementing now and the effect that it will have on our neighborhoods in some ways to Swiss cheese. And I've shared this with my colleagues in the workshop because we're essentially creating, in many ways, voids, right, all throughout our neighborhood. Voids and that vibrancy of having neighbors and having the pleasure of having neighbors and having families. And I think that in some cases, and we've considered some of those cases this evening, there's some great use for short-term rentals. And I'm not suggesting that it's more appropriate at the resort or at the bayfront than it is in, say, the Rose Hall District, which is less traditionally regarded as a, as an area for tourism. But, but many of our, of our communities are, are really vibrant neighborhoods and I'm concerned about the impact this ordinance will have on that. And then specifically, I, I think we need to review the ordinance with a quickness. And I suspect my colleagues agree on that and I look forward to that dialogue, specifically the number of permits we're approving, the concentration of those permits. Parking, I have some concerns, as Mr. Wood pointed out, about using the garage as a, counting as a parking space. I don't think that's going to work in practice. And as well, the length of permit, five years is, is a long time if there, if there are problems. And I think that there is a, could be a bureaucratic challenge to having three documented violations. And I think in practice, that's not going to really play out. But at the end of the day, our neighborhoods are the foundation of our community. Their neighborhoods, as was pointed out to me by someone very wise, neighborhoods feed into schools, our schools feed into our economy, into our jobs, into our businesses. And when we start to create voids in the neighborhoods in the way that I believe we are, I think we're doing damage to our community. And I look forward to having a review of the ordinance and hopefully finding something that respects and protects our neighborhood and community. Having said that, I think it's important that we honor the spirit of the ordinance as was adopted and we honor the work that was done by the previous council and planning commission and many others. And that's why I've chosen to support the applications as I have this evening and move for approval for this particular one tonight.
Second.
All right, any other comment? Vote is open.
By a vote of eight to three, approve the application of Kelly Allen.
Okay, almost through it. Number 23, Zachary Nelson, Ray, conditional use permit, short-term rental at 2916 Dante Place, District 3.
It's 22, sir. Mr. Mayor, it's 22.
22. Oh, my goodness, my apologies. Oh, long night for the.
He was eager, though.
Yeah. Carlin Creative Concepts LLC, Oliver J. Carlin, conditional use, short-term rental. 947 Fern Ridge Road, District 3, Rose Hall. And my apologies, welcome.
If you'll state your name for the record, please.
My name is Mo Carlin. I'm here for my husband. My husband is applicant, he is deploying to Bahrain for now. If you had a question, my mother-in-law, she can help me with the language.
I'm Sabrina Norred.
Welcome.
I'm Oliver Carlin's mother. And this is my daughter-in-law.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Messner?
Evening. I was going to wait through these three because I'm really interested in item 24. That's one reason I'm staying here this long. But Mr. Bellucci, you brought up all these issues, all those, the speakers that were here on the 21st, the concerns about the neighborhood and that was, you know, they had people right beside them. I, I can't believe after everything you said that you approved that. You know, I, I expected you, when you brought up all those issues. You know, it's, it's kind of late to be asking for, you know, more research and more information for the next things and then to approve these. I think it would be really wise to defer because, you know, are these people doing criminal background checks? You know, the proximity to their neighbors? Do the neighbors even know? When y'all approved that brewery, that, you know, it was supposed to be the whole neighborhood that knew about that and it was only a couple houses, not even the one directly adjacent to the shopping center. So this is all kinds of traffic, all kinds of problems. And, you know, the burden's going to fall on the first responders and the, and the neighbors because once you approve it, like you said, five-year, it absolutely should not be. It should be one-year conditional use permit. And I, I just think that there's just too many of these. It's ridiculous.
Let's call the speakers.
All right, Mr. Bellucci.
I move for approval with, and if I would ask my colleague, Mr. Tower, to once again read the condition.
No events with more than the permitted number of people who may stay overnight. Number of bedrooms times three shall be held at the short-term rental unit and, or on the property on which it's located. This short-term rental may not request or obtain a special event permit under City Code Section 4-18A.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
And if I could just, I just would like just to make one moment because I, just to respond to the comment that Ms. Messner made, I'm working on being more concise, it's something I'm actively aspiring to. So perhaps in my exuberance, I didn't make myself very clear that I approved, I make a motion to approve these with hesitation. I think it's important to honor the spirit of the work that occurred before and the intent of the ordinance that is adopted that we're working with tonight. But I look forward to making some amendments to the ordinance in a way that will be more protective of our neighborhoods. So thank you.
Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of eight to three, approve the application of Carlin Creative Concepts, Oliver J. Carlin.
Okay, now item 23, Zachary Nelson for conditional use permit, Ray, short-term rental at 2916 Dante Place, District 3, Rose Hall.
Hello, everybody. First-time city council, got to say I have a new respect for the diligence that you guys put into this, the amount of time that you guys put into all this. Put a little bit of time into myself this evening. Appreciate you guys' patience with all this. So a lot of the things that I've heard tonight has got to do with neighborhoods, with neighbors, doing due diligence with the people that you're, whose lives you're affecting. My wife and I have been running a short-term rental out of this unit for just shy of two years. We just missed the grandfather. And it is our primary residence. And so we really only do it when we're, that's not my house. We really only do it when we're out of town. And as soon as we come back, we're checking with our neighbors and we're saying, hey, were the people okay? Was they good? Was there something we can do better? As has been mentioned in the past, it doesn't do us any favors with our community to short-sell our neighbors when it comes to short-term rentals. So the initial application, as I understand it, for my short-term rental was approved. And then there was a discovery with a, a fire hydrant code issue regarding my parking plan. It's a four-bedroom house, requires four parking spaces. I was good and then there was a, the fire hydrant. Now, since obviously moving the fire hydrant is out of the question, we had proposed to either widen the driveway or use a garage as an extra space. I agree with you, Mr. Bellucci, using the garage is maybe not the wisest move. Also, we have a lot of stuff in there and it'd be kind of hard to fit a car in there, anyway. So unfortunately, my hands are a little bit tied seeing this is my primary residence. However, we only ever listed, and we've been doing this for the last two years, we've only ever listed it as being a three-bedroom rental. So three parking spaces would be sufficient if the council were to use its discretion to place a condition on the conditional use permit. In that sense, I would be totally amenable to that. Standing by for any questions that you guys.
Mr. Wood?
Okay, that, that was, can you, okay, there it is. Yeah, because that's, that's been my concern with this one because I'm not a fan of the, of the garage parking and also that fire hydrant's problematic and frankly, we don't want you putting more impervious surface up there. So you would be, you'd be okay with us saying that in this case, it would, it would be treated as a, as a three-bedroom as opposed to a four-bedroom? So maximum occupancy would be nine as opposed to 12?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Jones.
You say it's your primary residence. How often do you rent it?
Rarely, holidays, weekends, not even weekends, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, just if we're out of town visiting family somewhere else.
Could you give me an idea how often that is?
On average, I'd say 20, 30, not even 30, 20 days a year.
20 days a year?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Jessica?
Can, can we, how, how long have you been renting the house for?
Just about two years, I think. We just missed the grandfather date, that was sometime in 2018.
Can we, Bobby, can we verify with the tax record how often the rental's being used?
I believe we can check to see the payments that have been, that have been done. I don't know if they have listed the specific days that they, when they reported.
Surely, we can walk that back based on how much occupancy tax has been paid.
Yes.
And we've been paying our taxes consistently the whole time. It does say how many days, or, I'm sorry, how many nights we've rented the property out.
Thank you.
Yes, Rosemary?
So when I read it, it said the staff had recommendations besides the garage of another place for the fourth car. Where, where is that?
The, the staff had at one point recommended that we, that we pour gravel or widen the driveway in some other respect in order to get that fourth parking spot.
Alongside the garage?
I think is, so if, yeah, if you look at it, there's, you can actually get two, it's a very deep driveway. You can get two spots there and one in front and you would have no need for the fourth spot.
Okay, anybody else at this point? Okay, thank you.
Barbara Messner?
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Bellucci. Okay, Mr. Berlucci.
This one is difficult. For the purposes of initiating a discussion anyway, I'm gonna move for approval with the condition that my colleague, Mr. Tower, will hopefully read for, once in the last time tonight.
And, and the, and the number of bedrooms.
And the number of bedrooms, yeah, as well, yeah. Well, let's go through one at a time.
No events with more than the permitted number of people who may stay overnight, number of bedrooms times three shall be held at the short-term rental unit or the property on which it's located. This short-term rental may not request or obtain a special event permit under City Code Section four dash one eight A.
Thank you. And the other condition would be that the, that the property would only be able to be rented as a three-bedroom home instead of four.
Second. Okay, we have, any discussion?
Can I just clarify that that would also mean that, that condition fifteen would be modified from twelve individuals to nine?
That is correct.
And just as a point of discussion, and I don't know if this is, should be directed as a question, but I'll just make a comment. I'm still somewhat concerned about the public safety implications of using this the way that it is because as a matter of practice, people could park there well within the, the recommended three-foot clearance from the Fire Prevention Bureau, even if there are only three cars there. So I don't know if anything can be done to prevent, or should be done, but I would, I would, I'm comfortable with the motion as is, but I felt an ob, some obligation to raise that question.
We'd be happy to comply however we can.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Vote is open.
By a vote of eight to three, you have approved the application of Zachary Nelson.
Okay, the final planning item for the evening, number twenty-four, ordinance to amend Section one-one-one and add Section two-oh-nine-point-seven to City Zoning Ordinance, CZO, raise student-worker housing requested by Councilmember Tower.
First, the first speaker is Diana Burke. And then after Ms. Burke is Barbara Messner. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Council, City Council. I so appreciate, it's been a very long evening, and I think I'm gonna be reciting what Councilman Ta, Tower has said to us this evening in my sleep, but I won't keep you long. I am Diana Burke, the Executive Director of the Virginia Beach Hotel Association. We have some experts with us tonight that, to share with you a bit more about the Summer Work Travel Program. I'm not gonna say much, other than I'm very grateful and honored that you're going to be listening to some conversation this evening about some changes to the zoning ordinance. I like to share with everyone, just as we woo our guests to the city, we also have to woo our employers, try that again, employees, through this Summer Work Travel Program. What I mean by that is you'll hear from a U.S. sponsor this evening, and she recruits students from all over the globe, and they look at different destinations to come to. One of ours, of course, we like to think is top of the list. Part of the problem is affordable housing. So you're gonna hear tonight a little bit more about why she's here, and by the way, I wanna thank Jamie when she comes up. She came all the way from O B X, and it's been a long evening. So, without further ado, I'm gonna read a little bit of some statistics that I think might help frame the discussion. Virginia Stat, State Fact Sheet. Each year, Virginia businesses host international college students and graduates participating in the Department of State's J-one Visa Summer Work Travel Intern, Trainee, Opair, and Camp Counselor Programs. This collaboration, excuse me, this collaboration offers Myra diplomacy and national security benefits to our country and significant economic benefits, including vital tax revenue, to communities across Virginia. Keep in mind that these are the states, are the stats for the entire Commonwealth, but the economic impact of summer work travel participants is twenty-four-point-nine million dollars. Now, we can talk more about how many of the students have come here in the past, Jamie will speak to that, but I can tell you the number throughout the state is four thousand six hundred ninety-eight, so the magnitude of this program is quite large. And I just appreciate you supporting the ability for them to come here and find affordable and safe housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Messner. And after Ms. Messner is Kim Keen.
I'm very familiar with this, and I think it's the Virginia Beach Community Chapel where they had that horrible flooding. They, a lot of these people come here, and yes, they need housing, but we need housing more than they do, and global, I mean, we're gonna provide housing for people from around the world, and they, I've been over to the Community Chapel when they have orientation and they send these people on bikes all over the city. You know how dangerous it is? How many people get killed on bikes? And some of the workers that used to come from Russia, I don't think they're coming anymore because there've been a lot of, sorry, Mr. Wood, a lot of serious attacks like on Twenty-Fourth Street. I think it's better, but, you know, I drive around, it's not safe at night, and I see these single women riding bikes all over the oceanfront. But wherever they're working, it's the workers, it's the employer who is responsible, not, not the city. And, you know, with all the problems we have, it used to be the teachers and the, the teachers that did part-time work, because most, a lot of the teachers only worked, you know, nine months, they were the employees at the oceanfront. It used to be really fun, clean, safe, and, and the, the kids that work here. But the reason that they don't get those jobs is because you can get someone else to come over here and not pay them as much, and, and there's no parking anymore. So to, to have housing, I mean, you build the Homeless Resource Center and it's only housing, you know, for twenty-two women and twenty-nine men overnight, they're thrown back on the street, and you're gonna have workforce housing at the oceanfront to support the hotel industry? And you know how many people here are funded by the hotel industry? So, I'm in opposition.
Thank you.
Kim Keen. And after Ms. Keen is Jamie Ban, Bancheck.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am a Human Resources Director on the oceanfront for a very large hotel company. I hire people, I bring them from all over Eastern Europe, from China, from the Philippines, from Thailand, from every country imaginable, for jobs that I cannot get U.S. workers to do. We pay them the exact same thing we pay our U.S. workers if they would only do it. So in order for us to get our J-one visa holder student workers here and to house them safely, adequately, and have them have an amazing cultural experience while they're here, we've got to have housing. And we've got to do it differently than the ordinance that we currently have. If we could double that, which is eight unrelated items, or not items, people in a unit, that would really save us. We couldn't operate the oceanfront without these students. We couldn't do it. We would not have tourists. We just wouldn't do it. I can't get other people to work. So we bring them from Europe, they get a great cultural experience, we get a great cultural experience, and we have amazing interactions in Virginia Beach. So please, support this ordinance change. We would really appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Are you author, excuse me, if you could, please? Are you an authorized State Department sponsor for this program?
I am not a sponsor. We work with the sponsor, and Jamie will speak to you, she's one of the sponsors.
So you're not a sponsor, just a benefactor?
Correct, yeah.
Now, you mentioned that you are, so is the sponsor or are you responsible for the housing and meeting all the requirements specified by the State Department?
So, we work in coordination with the sponsor, and generally speaking, now the employers have to find the housing.
But is, but who does the State Department hold responsible? The sponsor or you?
Jamie can speak to that. I believe the sponsor would be the right answer.
And now, since obviously you said you're engaged with the housing, and, and my understanding is we haven't been complying with the existing ordinance, in fact, we've been housing people at greater than even eight, but since you asserted you've been complying and so you're doing four, where did you find two-hundred-and-seventy homes?
That's a good question.
I'm gonna be asking it.
That's a good question. So, you're right, in the past, I, I think we have not been complying, but we have to now, we were told that. So, in order to house all of these people, we would have to go outside of Virginia Beach.
I'll ask this of the sponsor, but she can be prepared, because then the sponsor knowingly has been housing people, not in compliance with the ordinance, but I'll wait till she comes up to answer all that. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Henley.
So you say this is the, the, I guess, the Department of Labor or Immigration or whomever, it's a J-one visa program?
Correct.
I'm assuming it's kinda similar to our agricultural foreign worker.
Very similar, yes.
So you have to have these units inspected by the Health Department and by the State Department and so forth?
They have to conform with all of the city and state requirements.
So somebody comes out and measures each bedroom to make certain that they have enough space?
Not that I'm aware of.
And the Health Department doesn't come out several times a year and check the place like they do us?
So what we do is each J-one, each visa holder rents an apartment or rents a house or rents a room in a house. So it would be, they would have to inspect all of those. So it's not housing that we as an employer purchase and have, so, does that?
So the student actually pays the rent for it?
Correct, yes.
So the employer doesn't have to provide free housing?
That's correct. The student pays the rent.
Only agricultural people have to supply the housing, huh?
Well, yeah, a little different visa requirements for the visa, anyway.
So you all are not, y'all are not actually the ones who are responsible for the housing? It's the student who's responsible for the housing?
The student's responsible, but imagine being in Russia and trying to find housing. So we assist would maybe be the correct terminology.
Okay, Mr. Moss.
I believe when the sponsor comes up, she's gonna tell you that the State Department's gonna require them to certify housing, which means we've been certifying housing not in compliance with state and local regulations, so they're not in compliance with the expectations and regulations of the State Department, which I will be communicating. But nonetheless, they are required, but just not the employer. It's the sponsor when you go look at the State Department's page, they have a lot of requirements, which I suspect have not been enforced.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jamie Ban, Banick.
Welcome.
My name is Jamie Banjack. I'm a community liaison for one of the U.S. visa sponsors that helps oversee the Summer Work Travel Program. It was actually started as part of the Fulbright Hayes Act in nineteen-sixty-one, and it's overseen by the Department of State, not the Department of Labor. It creates unique opportunities for full-time university students that are post-secondary accredited academic institutions outside the United States. They come to the U.S. on their summer breaks to share their culture and ideas with people of the United States. They enter the program on a J-one visa. Every single student has a U.S.-based visa sponsor designated by the U.S. Department of State. There's thirty of us. We oversee all aspects of the program, and we are ultimately responsible for the health, safety, and welfare of every single participant who is on our program. While they're on the program, they're able to work for a maximum of four months in seasonal entry-level positions in order to help defray the cost of their travel. After the work portion of their program, students are granted up to one month to travel around the U.S. Living and working in your community of Virginia Beach is an invaluable experience for both the students, your businesses, and the Virginia Beach community at large. Every year, over, bless you, over twelve-hundred students choose Virginia Beach as their program destination to spend their summer break, choosing Virginia Beach over other top destinations such as Ocean City, Cape Cod, and Wildwood, New Jersey. It's a unique opportunity for Virginia Beach to showcase the region on a global scale and have the, the world come to you. While the program participants are living in the Virginia Beach community, visa sponsors and the City Department want to ensure they are living in safe, affordable, suitable housing that meets all local codes and ordinances, and have access to reliable, affordable, and convenient transportation to and from work. This must be taken into consideration by visa sponsors when choosing where to place participants. I wanna thank the City Council and the wider Virginia Beach community for welcoming these exchange participants into your community and for any initiatives you have that help ensure their safety and the continued success of the program here. And I know you have a bunch of questions for me.
I do, but can you identify, and provide for the record, who all the state sponsors are? You said there's more than thirty that are placing people in Virginia Beach?
Not all thirty would be active necessarily in Virginia Beach, but there are thirty organizations that are designated by the Department of State. There's an entire list, J-onevisa.state.gov.
So you, as a sponsor, get applications. All right, who gets the applica, you're trying to fill something, so obviously you have some outreach and there's some commercial transaction that's taking place for your placement, am I correct?
So we work with partner agencies in the country, so we're kind of the, I hate to say the middleman, but we're kind of a middleman.
You're a compensated broker.
It is a self-funded program. It's not like the Department of Defense language programs that's paid for by tax money.
It's all fair to say, it's, it's, you're making money doing it. I just want the public to understand that it's a commercial transaction.
Yes, so the students actually all pay money in order to participate in the program. Before they've ever bought their first plane ticket or paid their first week of rent, they have actually paid fees to participate in the program.
Now, there's many categories underneath the J-visa. You mentioned one.
Yes.
Is the category that you mentioned the category for which all the people are placed?
What, all what? We're talking about summer work travel.
Correct.
So, the J-one visa encompasses intern, trainee, camp counselors, summer work travel, there's even like some of the doctor internship kind of things like that.
There's one that says you have to complete at least the first semester of college before you apply, not just high school.
This is summer work travel, yes.
I'm very, I'm just, I'm very familiar with the regulations, I've studied them. So, I asked because, not, not curious, I'll talk about that later, but is there a website by where the applications for all the visas the State Department has approved and who the people are and who they're sponsoring?
No.
Is that's not Freedom of Information Act information, or you just don't have it?
Um, that is, to my knowledge, not Freedom of Information. I know the State Department, because I, and I work in communities all over the country, and I'm constantly, where are all these kids living? I wanna know, I have to evacuate them for a hurricane, or I wanna go pick up everybody and take them somewhere. You can't just call the State Department and get everyone's name, visa sponsor, and address.
Well, since we've established tonight that we haven't been totally complying historically with the regulations, who's the agent at the State Department as the inspector general? Who is the place you go to when you know sponsors aren't meeting their obligation under the sponsorship that they've been certified to provide?
J-onevisa.state.gov. You can email them twenty-four-seven. There's also a hotline that's listed on that, and you call them up and you say, there's these kids in Virginia Beach and some sponsor down here is not doing their job. The State Department will call me the next day.
Well, why is it, since we know we haven't been complying with the existing ordinance, which is what drove this, how come there is no previous, I don't know how long that's been going on, probably long, from long, I've talked about it, it's more than a year, from what I understand, many years. How come we didn't see any corrective leasing? And what was the cause for you now to ask the change? Did you get inspected by the State Department and found in non-compliance? But why all of a sudden the decision to come clean? And I'm trying to understand the motive, what motive, usually it's something external, but what causes all of a sudden we're now gonna have compliance?
So, because according to the U.S. State Department, and in order to keep our accreditation, me and all the other twenty-nine visa sponsors, it's, it's listed in the regulations, we have to provide safe, available, that meets all local codes and ordinances. Up until this point, we didn't know about this ordinance. Once we found out about it, I'm obligated, and it, honestly, like, again, it's a competitive program. And so if I have fifteen students that are coming to me asking me for, you know, can I work in the U.S. this summer? Sure, but we gotta find you a place to live that you can meet codes and ordinances, and sorry, it's just not available in Virginia Beach. You might need to go work in Cape Cod.
Okay, I have other questions later, but that's all.
Okay, Mr. Henley.
May I ask, what type of housing do you use? Do you use houses? Do you go out and rent a house for a bunch of kids to live in? Or are they living with a family? Or how are you providing the housing?
I would say yes to all of that. And in terms of providing housing, you know, it's a complicated relationship in that, you know, I happen to live and be around this area on a pretty regular basis, but my company has students all over the country. And in terms of providing housing, you know, it's a complicated relationship in that, you know, I happen to live and be around this area on a pretty regular basis, but my company has students all over the country. And so we work very closely with employers like Kim, because they're the boots on the ground. And in areas where there is housing, sometimes they live with host families. You know, you might rent out a room in your house all summer and have two or three students that's, you know, are your host fam-- you're a host family for the summer. Sometimes it's somebody who has, doesn't want an Airbnb their home, and they'll rent it out to four or five people. Sometimes it's an employer who will, you know, rent an apartment and sublease it. It just depend, honestly, we scramble all the time in order to keep the program going.
I can't imagine how you find that much housing.
It's terrifying, it's terrifying. There's over 100,000 students that come every summer to the US.
Okay, thank, anybody else? Thank you very much.
I'll call the speakers.
Okay, Mr. Tower.
May I ask?
Oh, yes.
One of these people, how do you anticipate providing this? Are you going to, do you plan to go out and rent some houses, or that's what you're gonna do? I mean, where are we gonna be having these...
Somebody come back to the podium and answer the question, please.
So, we, the company that I work with brings about 120 students over every summer. We have advertised with the Community Chapel. We have rented apartments and subleased them, and that's how we do it. It's, it's, it starts about the end of the season, in October, we start looking for housing for the next spring.
What kind of standards do you comply with as far as how much room each student will have? I mean, how many people are you putting in a bedroom, for example?
Good question, that's a very good question. So, I can only speak for myself, my employer. And we actually are very concerned with the ordinance, and we follow the ordinance 50 square foot per, you know, in each bedroom, et cetera.
Mr. Moss.
I'm trying to reconcile, I have a lot of comments about how this got here and the poor process that we...
Can she answer my question?
Oh, yeah, sure.
First she came up to...
I did, I wanted to add a couple of things there. So there, again, I do this in a lot of communities around the country, and depending on what kind of community has, you know, there's an international housing code that has how many people per bedroom. There's, you know, there's different committees in different communities that work where you have to have inspections every year. Some communities don't require that. Again, it's up to the community to put the framework in place in order for the employer and the visa sponsor to work in it. There are communities, several, Wisconsin Dells, Pigeon Forge, where they have built dormitories for seasonal workforce. It's not just J-1 visa students, it's seasonal workforce. And in fact, we have a community and employer forum coming up in March where we've invited the builder and the manager for... Yeah, he's spoken Branson, but he's actually based in the Wisconsin Dells, where they have 6,000 participants on the program every year.
We don't have that kind of housing, so how are you gonna find it in Virginia Beach?
Well, hopefully we'll be able to change the ordinance, and then that way, for, for instance, the private homes, you had two bedrooms in a private home that a family lives in, and they have the rest of the house and two other bedrooms. If we can put more than four unrelated people in that dwelling, then we can double the housing. But we cannot, we can't, you cannot cram people in an apartment, you cannot humanely do that ethically.
How do we make sure if there's no inspection? I mean, that's my concern, is that, you know, I want to make sure we're not creating this situation where we're gonna have eight kids living in a crammed-in apartment.
So every student does have to register in SEVIS with the Department of State when their feet hit the ground. And I, I do, if, if there's a, I don't know what the State Department's flag is for each community, but I know I have actually gotten calls and said, go knock on this door. We got a flag that said there's 16 people registered at this address, go find out if there's 16 people living at that address. And when I've gotten there and there's 16 people, because what happens is, as a visa sponsor, I know I have three students that are living there, and I can look at it and go, great, it's a three-bedroom, y'all have a nice summer. But then there's another visa sponsor that says they have four students living there, and they're going, great, have a nice summer. But because the State Department doesn't share every single person's name, address, social security, you know, like, it's hard to know. And so, but the State Department does have that safety net, and they will call us if there's a flag that says too many people have registered at the same address.
Now, when this was, first when this, well, I'll talk about that later, but this, our background sheet says 1,100 students in 2019. So somewhere, that came from a database somewhere.
Came from Mike James with the Department of State, was here and presented that number last year.
So we can get some aggregate level data, correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's what I'm after. And so that, if you do your policy of eight, which I just think is ridiculous personally, can't imagine 12 people in a, in a, in a home.
Could be a four-bedroom home.
It's like the Waltons, I don't think we really want that.
You can't put a set of bedro-- a set of bunk beds in a...
That's our choice, I appreciate your perspective, but that's our opinion, is what votes. But the, but I'm after, that's 137 homes just by itself. 137 homes. And this ordinance doesn't just apply to the resort area, it applies to the whole city. And we've had no public hearings, we've had ourselves, we've had no public discussion. And this is how it kind of got in, maybe the short-term rental, I want to repeat some of that. So we're making the big bet, and we're pushing in the liability, and because it's students, that's supposed to be magical and change things, but it's not. But where did we find the 137 home? Because you didn't comply, number one, we know that. So where did these 137...
There's also a difference in the city of Virginia Beach between lodging units and dwelling units. And many of these students lived in lodging units, not dwelling units.
Well, we don't have any of this information, we are, we are very ignorant, because this is all we got to do.
Me too, I'm really excited to be here, because yes.
Well, I think, but we're being asked to make a policy decision with less than policy-level information. So, we're trying to get educated here tonight, this isn't the best time at 9:30 to be getting it, but we also shouldn't be adopting something without less than a full understanding of what we're adopting. And so, so we don't know where those people were, we just know we want compliance with the rules. So now going forward as a sponsor, and not just waiting for the State Department to come and call you, what is, who are all the sponsors, that would be nice to know? And what's their collective quality assurance plan? Rather than pushing that burden onto our staff, you're putting that burden on your organization, because you're being compensated.
What the visa sponsors are really going to do is say, I'm sorry, Virginia Beach, you have no available housing, it's not fair, it's not safe, we can't send students there, and they're not gonna come to Virginia Beach.
So what you're really telling us is, if we don't comply with what you want, you take your ball and go home, I understand that. Well, that's what you just said, anybody who watched, and that's what they would walk away with. But in reality...
I'm tasked, I am tasked with ensuring...
I'm just asking if you got what you wanted, which I don't know is right, but if you got what you wanted, you have an obligation to say, I wasn't doing enforcement in the past, I wasn't complying in the past, the State Department's not helping us very much externally. So I'm asking, what's your quality assurance plan that you have to assure that if we were to pass it, that it, that we would get compliance? And I don't, and if people are staying less than 90 days, are they, are they paying hotel? I know four months is the max, doesn't mean they actually use it. So how much is the duration of employment? And if the duration of employment of the unit is 90 days or less, then we're entitled to lodging tax. So how, so, and those are revenues. So I'm just trying to make sure if we're playing all this game, what's the implementation plan, and I don't think we've received one.
Okay, Mr. Wood.
If I can make a suggestion, that it may be a motion that we, I'll make a motion that we defer this, because Mr. Moss and Ms. Henley have brought up some interesting information that I think we need, we need, we need more information on. And, and I understand Mr. Tower brought this forward, but, but a lot of this stuff is, is new that I haven't, I haven't heard before. I am concerned about the impact on, on neighborhoods. And when we sit here for 9:15, we've been talking about short-term rentals with three, three per bedroom for, seems like decades. So I, I, I think that, I, I would move that it, that it be indefinitely, well, defer it until the first meeting in March. And, and at that point, between then, we could have some sort of briefing on this.
Hey, we have a motion to defer.
Does that fit with your, your schedule for, for getting these kids?
So I just, today, for instance, interviewed about 15 Russian students.
Maybe to the 18th, defer to the 18th. Give us a plan for the summer, where they're gonna be, and how we're gonna know how it's operated. Maybe we just do it for one year and see how it operates, I don't know, but...
March 18?
Maybe she could come back with a...
February 18.
February 18.
Excellent.
Would that be okay, still give you... Okay, we have a motion for a referral to February 18. Second, or Mr. Tower.
I just wanted to ask a question. How does that date fit with the summer of 2020?
We're all ready behind the eight ball.
Yeah.
And, and honestly, like, a lot of it, we, we probably need to, to figure out a lot of things before then. You know, if you come and, and say like, this is what the city is willing to do, this is the, you know, inspections we want you to have, this is the square footage you want me to have, you know, and, and right now, like, there's pieces and parts of this. You know, if I can put 12 people in a four-bedroom house, because I can put three people per room or whatever, but then I can't do that, because I can't have more than four unrelated people, like, somewhere in here is, is an answer in terms of how to, how to make these things work. And if it needs to be, that there needs to be inspections, if it needs to be that there's a permit. And again, some of this stuff exists, you know, there are other communities. Ocean City has a press committee that's planning something, safety and system, I don't know. And like, there's, there's a, there's a housing that's based on their city council and stuff. There's Myrtle Beach, several of these other communities have paperwork, programs, ordinances already in place. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. But you have to tell us as visa sponsors what you're willing to accept and what you're not, and then we work within that framework.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, and it's, okay, Mr....
Well, I just wanted to say, I'm obviously very concerned for the hotel industry. This is a vital, vital part of what we do in Virginia Beach. And this is a vital part of our community in terms of the exchange. And even more so, these are, these are operational issues that basically mean some of our hotels, if we don't have these students, cannot effectively serve. And if they are not serving their customers, those customers are gone, and they may never come back. So this is a critical economic issue for, for the city. I understand all these, but I just want to make sure we, we also understand the criticality of the timing of this. Nobody, I'm not pointing any fingers at anybody, the timing, I think the industry, once it realized what it had on its hands, has acted with as much alacrity as could be reasonably expected. I think we've had cooperation from staff. I think the sponsor community and the hotel community have all done everything they could. We just got started late, and that's not an answer to some of the questions that are being asked, which are perfectly good questions, I'm not, it's them, I just want to make sure everybody understands we're on a tight schedule here. If we can get this, if we can get this done this month, it will be very meaningful to a lot of people.
Okay, Mr. Bolucci.
Well, I would just like to associate myself with the remarks made by Councilman Tower, and also state that I had a chance to speak with some representatives from the industry who expressed to me grave concerns about the timeline of this adoption of this ordinance, and how critical the adoption of this ordinance is to the operations of what's a critical foundational element of our economy. We spend a lot of time here talking about expanding and diversifying our economy, investing in economic development, and what I think one of the worst mistakes we could make is to turn our back and somehow neglect one of the pillars of our economy, which is tourism. I think it would be a tremendous mistake. I'm not sure if February 18th makes a material difference. But, but the message that was delivered to me about what's such a necessary and important component of not only our economy but our culture, is that this, we are behind the eight ball, and that we are, we, we, implementation should, is really, should have already occurred with this. And so, I, I'm concerned about a delay. And I would conclude my remarks by asking a question of Ms. Burke, if she's willing, on behalf of the Hotel Association, to, to tell us, to enlighten us on what a delay, what, how that would impact...
Diane, come on up to the podium.
How that would impact the folks you represent.
And what I didn't state upfront is I do represent 70 hotels, and so the largest employer happens to be Coastal Hospitality. I think last year, 150 students, shamine, I can name the others not to bore you or, or draw this out, but I can tell you, they are gonna go to other destinations. And thus, I, I joke all the time that many of our GMs are going to be cleaning rooms. We, at our expo tomorrow, we have a job posting board, we have so many vacancies, I know you've heard that before in the news. We don't have enough individuals to fill the vital components of this very incredible industry that brings 60 million to our general fund. So, I totally understand what you're asking, I get it, we are behind the eight ball, and I'm not gonna give you excuses as to why, but it's critical. That's where we are, so however quickly we can figure out what we need to do, we will do it, but we gotta do it fast.
Of those 1,200 students that come every summer, most of them work more than one job. So you're talking about a lot more than just 1,200 jobs.
So if I could just follow up, would it be safe to say that you're opposed to a delay?
Absolutely.
And also, and, and just as a matter of, a point, we have a workforce shortage in so many sectors of our economy, including this one. So why would we do anything to contribute to that workforce shortage? I oppose the delay.
Thank you.
Yeah, John.
Not to get into a long labor economics discussion, but higher labor rates solve a lot of shortages, not some, but certainly in this level of low wage, if you want to fill those jobs with locals, it's possible, maybe at a wage they can't pass on. That's one of the reasons why we have these problems, programs nationally, let's just be honest, they're labor subsidy programs, and that's a national policy, so we live with it. But it's not like there's a shortage of people at the right labor rate that wouldn't fill their jobs. So I think we need to make certain that we're not saying that. Secondly, I appreciate that you're, you're late to the table, and we'll do as much as we can, but as often that little sign in my Admiral's office is your failure to plan is not my emergency, but understand we have a commitment not to see the industry be adversely impacted. But at the same token, we have our own obligation to the people where this policy would apply to. So I don't want anybody watching thinking, because we didn't, we weren't informed. When I got this little thing two weeks ago in our packet, to be frank, it just had a single slide that said workforce, student workforce ordinance. There wasn't a copy of the ordinance, there wasn't any background information, there was nothing talking about the sense of urgency, nothing that said you relate the need, nothing that identified a critical timeline. That's two weeks ago. I asked a long list of questions to the city manager, all of which were not answered before I got here tonight, some of which I answered with my own self-talk in the State Department. Then when we get the packet in here, again, look at what we got. Didn't talk about this big crisis, didn't talk about the timeline. All the information shared, which hopefully maybe staff knew, wasn't in our packet on a Friday. So I just want you to appreciate, the public to appreciate, what we're working for. But there was plenty of time before the vote tonight for us to have got a briefing, by the staff to say, hey, this is a big issue within, this is what, but none of that came. And so when you're looking at us asking why we're so inquisitive, it's because we've been starved of, of workable knowledge and had to do the research on our own, which, it's not your problem, that's, that's ours. But I just want you to understand that it's not like we're not helpful to solve your problem, but we're trying to make sure that we don't create an equally bigger problem, and can we do them all in the same timeline? And with that, I think it would be great to ask Congress and Loria to have, probably would be by VTC, if someone from the State Department could do a little, you know, who, what, where, when, and how frequently ask questions about what their role is on this program, I think that would be great.
March 10. March 10, we've already got it scheduled. We do this every year, where someone from the State Department comes down and we invite all of our stakeholders, of course, our sitting council person. I know, I know.
I want to do a VTC so they can do it like for 30 minutes and say, here's what the scoop is, you know?
If we could do that tomorrow, I'd be thrilled, but I totally understand where you are and respect everyone's thoughts. And I'm not gonna give you excuses, and I'm not gonna throw anyone under the bus either. It's just been a very hard year, I'll leave it there, as to why we are where we are.
If we get there sooner, I'd entertain a special session. I'm just not prepared with what I know tonight to solve the problem.
Rosemary.
Mrs. Henley brought up maybe another option, since this is such a crunch, significant time of maybe just giving it one year and to get through the season and being able to get all of our questions answered and so we could have things in place for next year. I don't know if council would entertain doing a one-year approval.
You know, my thought was, you know, listening to both sides. You know, this is, you know, this is a tough one. If we could run it as a pilot program for one year, and during that time, you know, get, you know, the significant information that we need. You know, the, you know, the, you know, the hotel industry is vital to this, you know, area. And the thing is, yes, there is, you know, inherent flaws. But my suggestion is, you know, if, you know, if we run it as a pilot... if we run it as a pilot program, that we, you know, get concurrent information about what's going on, status updates on how things are going, that we procure the information we need to make the valued decision next year.
So where are we in, I forgot where we are in the voting process. Is it just one motion on the floor?
Motion on the floor is to defer to the February 18th.
What I would suggest instead, if I could just, rather than deferring to the 18th, because I really think we ought to know what number of people in the bedrooms and something about the implementation plan, some minimal thing so we know, is let's, that's, they want the sense of urgency question. If we think three to a bed, two to a bedroom is what we think is the right answer, let's have just a special session after the workshop next Tuesday where we have a chance to see what and look at and see ahead of time what we're voting on versus sitting here and we're all mentally walking away with a different interpretation of what's said. What's the actual motion? And I think what, and she's going to want to know, what exactly are the standards we're asking them to meet? She needs that certainty. And I don't think we're going to do a very good job trying to solve that tonight.
See, my motion to see next week.
Yeah, and have a special session and fix urgency.
Mr., make it a voting session too, so we can resolve it.
A special session for that purpose only. And let's, I mean, I'm with, I'm with Mike on his sense of urgency, but I do think we need to see something that we're actually voting on that we didn't negotiate. And everybody walks away thinking one thing, but we passed something else.
You're saying vote on, vote on next week?
Yeah, make it a voting set, work session.
We have an ordinance to vote on.
I mean, tonight.
I would like to go, go ahead and make a substitute motion that we go ahead and prove it tonight for a pilot program for one year.
A second.
Okay, we have a substitute motion for a pilot program for one year. Mr. Moss.
We are posting on our neighborhoods without any appreciation that there could be someone based on whatever we would look at this with the house next door and it could be Plaza, Malibu, your own neighborhood, and there could be four-bedroom house, could be 12 students there. I, I think that without any, without any knowledge of knowing how it's being enforced, what the quality of control, you're, it's just basically like going to the bank and writing a blank check. Maybe if people are comfortable with that, great.
I have a question.
But I'm not.
Does the current ordinance allow for 12 people in an Airbnb to be in the neighborhood if there's three people per bedroom?
With the conditional use permit.
Yes, conditional use permit, which means you notify the neighborhood. Everybody comes in and has a chance to talk. Not going to meet your March, not going to meet your timeline. That's why I'm concerned. We are redefining family.
We don't know what they're going to do.
Yeah, I'm just, but if other people are comfortable, I'm just not. But I don't have to justify what happens when it happens either.
Yeah, Mr. Tower.
I, I was just going to make sure we understood it was two to a bedroom, not three. Don't want to mix up the two, what we've been dealing with earlier this evening.
No, this says those eight can be considered a family.
You reset them.
And it could be other people in that, in that home before that. I mean, I'm just, this is not, like I said, we don't even know how we would, our own zoning department would implement how this works. But if you're all comfortable, fine. We probably need to, we probably have exhausted this topic, I suspect.
Jessica.
I don't like, I hate to belabor this anymore, because I'm very sympathetic. Next week would not inconvenience you all that much, would it?
It would be okay.
It's okay. I'm, I, I appreciate the urgency. I do. I, I, but I really do sympathize with a lot of the concerns. And frankly, and, and I, I sat down with you and I, I appreciate it. I have a personal connection to the, this program. And I, I was prepared to support it tonight, but I'm not sure the community understands what we're voting on tonight either. And I think even just a handful of days for us to further vet this is in the best interest of all people involved, especially since, you know, it doesn't drastically inconvenience anyone. So I mean, I, I would be more apt to having a special session next week, just for the simple fact that I think we need to further vet it and understand comprehensively.
Well, I, Mr. Mayor, I would support a deferral for a week, given the response. And I, I want to make one more comment, talking about throwing people under the bus. I take total personal responsibility for the lack of information, more information ahead. I was the one who sponsored the resolution. Staff has not dawdled on this, nor have any of these folks at the, at the podium, I want to know. So throw me under the bus if anybody, anybody for, but I think a week will work.
If I could, yeah.
So the motion we have right now is a motion, is a substitute motion. So I, I made a motion to defer it for two weeks.
Two weeks.
And there's a substitute motion to pass it. Can we do a substitute, substitute mark?
I can amend, I can amend.
Could you amend yours, Rosemary?
I can amend my motion to put it off till next Tuesday, have a briefing and a voting meeting.
Yeah, we will call a special session with a voting meeting, so it will be resolved this time next week.
Second.
Okay, okay. Do we have, we have a motion and second?
That's from something else.
You changed it.
Yes, okay. Before it was a different motion.
The motion is to defer it till next week with a workshop and voting, a special voting.
Just...
Yes.
Mr. Wood, do you accept that as a substitute? So we only have one motion to vote on? So, so it's now just a motion to defer it to a, for a briefing and a special voting meeting next Tuesday?
That is correct.
That's what I want, however.
And just so you know, I've had 27 Ford students on cultural exchanges that aren't work-related.
They don't have to be.
I know, I met ones, but mine have not been.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Vote, votes open.
Five out of 11 to zero. You've deferred this item to February the 11th.
Okay.
Thank you, ladies.
And on a closing note, I do hope you come to the expo tomorrow. There is a huge job posting board. And thank you, Councilman Rouse. I know you've shared it. We can't find enough people to fill those jobs. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wood, two appointments.
Mr. Mayor, I nominate the following individuals for boards and commissions. For the Board of Zoning Appeals, Elizabeth Covner is an alternate. To the Housing Advisory Board, Lawrence Cleaver is a licensed architect. To the Military Economic Development Advisory Committee, Joe Strange is Development Authority Liaison. Resort Advisory Commission, Mike Eason. To the Planning Commission, Robin Klein, Centerville District. And so do those first.
Okay.
Will you include the Citizens Committee as well?
Not yet. That's next.
Okay, we're gonna, then we're gonna have, we have the vote on the names read.
Yeah.
Okay, this time, okay.
And so I would like to nominate the Citizens Committee from the Boards Commission. That's Larry Dotalo, Walter Kemp, Eric Ray, Jason Knight, Jimmy Wood, and Bernice Pope.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm, just want to make sure I'm understanding. Are we doing two separate motions?
Two separate motions.
Okay, we need to vote on the first one then.
That's what we just did, I thought.
We, we didn't, we, nobody ever called.
We're voting on the first group and then we'll vote on Rosemary.
Mr. Rouse and Mr. Tower, may I have your vote, please? By a vote of 11 to zero, you approve those as read by Vice Mayor Wood.
And then the next one.
Thank you.
Okay.
Wait, I'm sorry. Then, are we voting on the next one?
Yes.
Well, I have a question about that.
Okay.
Because many of the people who, whose names were read were not an adherent with the policy we adopted.
Yes, everyone that she read it.
Those five were.
I didn't read everything. I didn't read everyone.
She just read the files. She just read the ones that were.
I, I, I don't, I don't think so, based on my recollection of the conversation. They were, because Sylvia Strickland's name wasn't read and she does that.
She hasn't finished. I, I interrupted her because we, we need to do that motion.
She didn't file, so I didn't read her name.
I thought, I thought Bernice Pope didn't have one in.
Well, she had one in for the Resort Preservation Commission.
Can you confirm?
No, she does not have.
Thank you. That's what I thought.
Ms. Pope does not.
We can remove Bernice Pope for now.
Good catch, Mike. Okay.
Nothing personal, Bernice Pope.
We need to vote on this.
Yes.
Ms. Abbott, Mr. Belucci.
Was that with Ms. Pope's name?
Ms. Wilson.
Sorry, could you re-read the names again?
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Larry Dotalo, Walter Kemp, Eric Ray, Jason Knight, Jimmy Wood, and Sylvia Strickland.
Sorry, and Sylvia Strickland.
Yes.
I thought she didn't have one on, this is not on file.
She does have one on file.
Okay, and then Sylvia Strickland.
My memory is very good.
Okay, folks, let's, I know it's getting late, you know, let's, uh...
Aye.
I'm gonna give Mike a call sign.
By a vote of 10 to zero, with Mr. Wood abstaining, you have approved those as read by Ms. Wilson.
Mr. Mayor, we have two nominations for at-large planning commission, so start with Ms. Wilson.
I would like to recommend and nominate John Costin for the Planning Commission at-large seat. Mr. Costin was an employee of the city for 38 years with the fire department. He really knows this city. He was the captain with the fire department. Now he is the assistant pastor at New Jerusalem, Church of Christ and God Church in Sea-Tac. So he's also got a lot of affordable housing. I think he would be an excellent candidate for this position.
Okay, is there any other nominations? Mr. Moss.
I'm going to be nominating Diana Howard. She is a longtime resident of the Virginia Beach. She's retired. She's very active in the community. She has the time to be responsive and go visit the sites and contact people. I'm sure many of you have received emails like I have about not all the commissioners are responsive to calls and request a visit. What I think she brings, which is currently lacked on the planning commission, for anyone who watches it or regularly attends it, is someone who speaks from the average, everyday citizen's perspective, who isn't part of the building community, who isn't part of the banking community, isn't part of the industry community, isn't out there trying to solicit funding for different kinds of nonprofit events in the community, but is truly just like, like the bulk of the 500,000 citizens here who appreciates what it means, whether that's that short-term rental or whether that's B2 business or storage, a backyard in their, next being built in their neighborhood. And that's a perspective that our planning commission has lacked. Diana Howard's in fact here tonight, I would like to acknowledge. And she's here often. She's served on some regional boards as well as a citizen advocate representative on HR TAC. She comes here and appears often on issues of major consequence. She's always well reasoned. She's always, I would call, very polite, though she makes her points in a very clear and decisive fashion. I think she's the kind of person that when people talk about, they think the government doesn't always listen is because they don't see anyone who brings their perspective to the table. And so, but what I don't like is our process for voting. I wish we had a different one. We need to look at that. So I wish we were just asked to just say who we were voting for and then keep track of a tally, because no one likes to vote against someone, because these are both well-qualified people. So when I vote, I'm going to abstain, because I'm not saying that that person isn't a good person and wouldn't do a good job. I just think this other person would do a better job, just like in any job interview. So I want people to understand why I'm abstaining, because I, the process puts us in a, in an adversarial position where that's not where we are on these appointments, but we've got to figure out a better way. But for now, I'm going to vote for my applicant when it comes around my turn for that nominee. And then I'm going to abstain when it comes to the other individuals recognizing their quality and that they also a contributing member of the community.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this way we'll vote on John Costin.
The vote's open. By a vote of nine to zero with Ms. Abbott and Mr. Moss abstaining.
With a reason stated.
And I'm diddooing that reason. And now we need to vote for...
Okay, Diana Howard.
One second. Sorry, give us a second to open the vote. Okay, it's open. Thank you. Mr. Jones, thank you. By a vote of two to six with Ms. Henley, Mr. Tower, Ms. Wilson abstaining. So it's John Costin.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, okay, is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? I want to thank the gallery. I know we're going to have open mic pretty soon, but with your indulgence, while we transition over, you know, the camera, if we could take a very short couple-minute recess.
Thank you.